I Steve Walkens.
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support, obey and defend.
Support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Paul Badger.
All right. All right, I Paul Badger Jr.
I Paul Badger Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Zepi Karanik.
All right. I Zepi Karanik, sorry.
I Zepi Karanik.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will obey.
That I will support, obey.
Support, obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my.
Office with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. You must be Mr. Antonio.
Yep, Joe Antonio.
All right. I Joseph Antonio.
I Joseph Antonio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and each of you should find which one is yours and sign it. All right. All right, thank you, I assume. Maybe box them.
Thanks Katie.
All right, good luck everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you Judge, appreciate it.
The next item in the agenda is an informational item and that is the board membership list, which is provided with the names of the board members, their terms and their email addresses. And then the next item on the agenda is the selection of a temporary board president. We will now accept nominations for temporary board president.
I nominate Marshall Bleefeld.
Second.
Hearing no other motions, we will now accept the motion to close nominations.
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
We're going to vote on closing the nomination, so all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to accept Marshall Bleefeld as temporary word president?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favors has it, and thank you very much Marshall, you were the temporary president.
No, I'm good, I'll just take it.
Don't let it get to your head, Marshall.
We're good, let's move on. All right, so at this point, I believe it is my obligation to call for nominations for the permanent president and vice president positions within the board for the upcoming year. So with that in mind, is there a nomination for the president? I think president is first, correct?
And the president will then do the vice president.
For the president of the board for the upcoming year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Amy Ginsburg.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? All right. Seeing none. I will call the roll in order to declare the president for the upcoming year. So with that in mind, could you? Yes, I think that's how it's supposed to be done.
Mr. Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Yes.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Yes.
Ms. Karinikis?
Yes.
Dr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Mrs. Ginsburg?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about my time as president. Everything we've accomplished. And with that, I'll hand it over to Amy. Selection of vice president.
Thank you. All right. So nominations for vice president, so I did the same thing, I just, okay. Is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Joe Antonio.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Any other nomination? And then I do. Yeah, roll call vote again, okay, can we do a roll call vote on that then?
Sure. Mr. Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Yes.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Yes.
Ms. Karinikis?
Yes.
Dr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Joe. All right, and then this would be public comment just on
The annual board organization.
Annual board organization agenda, and we have none of that. Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn the organization meeting?
Second.
All right, a motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, annual board organization meeting is closed. All right, and now we will call the meeting to close this meeting and start a new Zoom, okay? Okay, so let's do the next roll call then, thank you.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Ms. Karinikis?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Harrison Ernst?
Here.
And Blake Zimmerman?
Here.
Eight present, zero absent and two student board reps this evening.
Thanks Katie, all right, well everyone join me again in stating the pledge of allegiance. Welcome everyone to our December 4th meeting of the Wissahicken School Board. First, if you look at our agenda, you'll see a list of our prior meetings. We met on October 30th for a work session, November 13th for a regular public board meeting. And on November 20th, we had our Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting, as well as our Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. That was actually our community conversation at the Ambler Borough Hall. Our upcoming meetings. On December 11th, we'll have our audit committee meeting preceding our regular public board meeting. January 8th, we'll have another public board meeting. January 16th, we'll have Health Wellness and Safety, as well as our Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And January 22nd will be our Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting. All right, now we'll move on to our presentations. And our first one this evening is our Wissahicken High School Monthly Highlights.
Hello, to start off this highlights, we're going to recognize it was Native American Heritage Month. So the library actually had like a little highlight and presentation about this month to teach kids about this. We also had the new turf open, which a lot of kids are very excited for, specific for athletics. And we had a ceremony, I know some board members were there for that. And kids like shot, shot some goals and tested out the new turf, which is awesome. To talk about athletics, fall sports actually wrapped up in the past with some senior nights and some great seasons. And winter sports actually just started, so this includes basketball, indoor track, swimming, diving and wrestling. The Indian Cultural Association hosted Garba a few Fridays ago, which is a cultural celebration. And additionally, Fall, Wissahicken Theater hosted their Fall Drama Pippin a few Fridays ago. So yeah, that's all we have for November, thank you.
Great, thank you guys, and wow, I love the turf field. That was like a great, that whole presentation, the whole event was so awesome. Any comments or questions from any board members this evening? All right, then we'll move on to our next presentation. The school district case study on later school start times with Radnor Township guests.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to introduce members of the Radnor Area School District, who will be providing a presentation on their successful transition to later school start times. Joining us this evening, we have Dr. Ken Bachelor Superintendent and Amy Goldman, the school board president. Welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having us this evening, we're really excited to talk to you about school start times. And we know that we have, my understanding is 10 minutes of presentation and then 10 minutes of questions and answers. So I'm going to keep my eye on the clock and try to hold to that as best as we can, because we could talk about this topic for a long time. And we're really excited to share with you, you know, this very important initiative for our students. As a superintendent, six, seven years ago, I had a, when I first started Radnor, I've been there seven years, for seven years now, I got to attend a conference that had superintendents from across the country. And I was a new superintendent, so I asked many of them at that conference in the Wauwah Suburban School District, what's your legacy, what's the most important thing you've done? And it was interesting to me to hear from a couple outside of Chicago and outside of California suburban districts, that superintendent shared with me, and one specifically said, I moved school start time, and that had the most significant impact. We were looking at it at the time as a new superintendent, and I got to tell you, I walked away from the conversation a little bit like, hmm, really, that's your legacy, school start time? I was not a big believer in school start time, I was a former high school lacrosse coach, who would open up the gym in the offseason at 6:00 AM. I wasn't somebody who was automatic, I'm a morning person, and I wasn't somebody who believed necessarily right off the bat that opening school later would make a difference for our kids. I now know why that superintendent said to me that his greatest legacy was moving school start time. We moved our school an hour later at Radnor four years ago, and it has had a tremendous impact. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. On the next slide, I guess I have control of it, I'm sorry, thank you. We have a ton of information on our website. This is just a link and just one to acknowledge to the board and to the community. If you go to our website, you can find the information. We had the final vote on April 23rd, 2019, and then we changed our school start time that following fall. Tonight, we want to talk quickly about why we changed and how we did it. And we're going to move through a lot of these slides very quickly. A lot of them are here just for informational purposes, some we may not even mention, so we can go through. But I'll turn it over to Amy Goldman, our school board president.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for having us out tonight to talk about this. In addition to being school board president, I also came to this subject just organically, because I had a teenager who didn't lie, who really struggled to go to sleep and to wake up in the morning. And it was really confounding, and then I heard about a lecture in the Lower Marion School District, where they had subject matter expert Judy Owens, who was, Dr. Judy Owens was one of the authors of the American Academy of Pediatrics study that made the first formal recommendation that secondary schools not begin before 8:30 AM. So what she had to say was really inspiring and really got me on the path to trying to better understand why this movement is so compelling. And in the midst of that, we created another movement, the Regional Adolescent Sleep Needs Coalition. And that group is a grassroots organization that consists of school board members and administrators and parents and health professionals, and even students who come together to better understand why it's so important, why the medical professionals across the country are making this recommendation. And then we lobbied the Pennsylvania Legislature to do a study, which some of you on the board may have had a chance to read, and perhaps some of the administrators, in 2018, the Pennsylvania Senate unanimously passed a resolution that required the Pennsylvania Joint State Government Commission to do a study as well on this subject. They published it in 2019, and from what I understand, it was one of the most sought after reports by school districts in Pennsylvania. So many school districts wanted to better understand the science behind this movement and how it could be done. As Dr. Bachelor mentioned, you had the good fortune of having Dr. Jacquet Floss and her colleague, Dr. Amanda Swain here, I understand, last week, to explain the science behind the movement, so we're not going to spend time tonight going through that, because you can, you have the chance to hear that, and there's always an opportunity to revisit the science. We're essentially here to tell you why we decided to change, how it could be done, and what does it, what has it looked like since we made the change? So we're going to advance the slides, if it's okay, through this. This is basically for the audience here, if they haven't seen it, I, perhaps you'll make it available to anybody else who hasn't had a chance to go through it. But these slides tend to concern themselves with the science of sleep and talking about the change in circadian rhythms, it's another, I like to say it's another biological change that our adolescents go through that may not be as visible as some of the other changes you see teenagers going through, such as getting taller and some of the other hormonal changes. There is a hormonal change associated with this, and that's something, since all of us as school officials are so concerned about student health, we talk about it incessantly. This is the biggest impact you can make on a broader scale, changing school start times, so that's why we did it. The, here's the slide that I'm sure Dr. Floss referred to, is some of the significant deleterious health outcomes by having insufficient sleep and ill timed sleep. And we also did a survey of our students before we made the change to find out what exactly was the state of sleep within our school district. We know all the national statistics that most US adolescents are sleep deprived and do not get appropriately timed sleep, because schools are waking them up too early, but we wanted to make it more germane to our community, and our results pretty much mirrored the national statistics. And then from here, Dr. Bachelor will probably resume this, but the mechanics of this of this initiative were really, came at the direction of the board to have the administration evaluate this subject and put together a committee and actually do the work with a variety of stakeholders. And Dr. Bachelor can talk to you a little bit about the Adolescent Sleep and School Start Time Committee that we formed.
Great, thank you. So when we set up a committee, we made sure of the committee, we asked questions of our community, our students, our staff, and we asked two questions actually, if they were even open to discussing this topic. And we purposely put people on the committee who weren't very open to it. So people who thought it maybe wouldn't be a good idea, we tried to put on the committee. We also tried to put people on the committee that thought it might be a good idea, and then we tried to find those people that were just in the middle, just trying to open, open to the topic. We had a T-shirt, and for a lot of initiatives at Radnor, I hand out this T-shirt, no decisions have been made, because whenever we do a topic at Radnor, everybody assumes that the superintendent has already got a plan, there's some plan in my desk drawer that we've already figured out what we're going to do. The reality was, we hadn't figured this out. We wanted to take a time to really look at this and decide if this would be right for Radnor. So as we, we studied it, we did come to the conclusion in our study that the science was extremely compelling. The science was compelling, and then it became a question of, okay, if this is compelling and this makes sense to us, how do we make it happen? And then we identified the challenges. From there, it became a problem solving activity, a really enormous and large problem solving activity. We looked at the challenges of school and community athletics, before and after school care, transportation, bell schedules and costs. In this presentation, you're going to see a lot of different examples of what we tried to do and how we did this. This is just a quick summary of what our times were previous to the change, and then these are our times you can see, once we made the change. We did move our high school one full hour, but in order to move our high school, we had to adjust our middle school and our elementary program as well. You could see that our elementary program was only adjusted by seven minutes, and our middle school program, we had to start them a little bit earlier. And I still have a board member to this day who wants us to go back and look at this, because hasn't been happy that the middle school kids are starting early. This is just an overview of the proposed schedule options. This was presented in November 13th, and I'm sharing this slide because we came forward to our community in a meeting like this with suggestions for, here are some ways we could do this in November 13th. And remember from the previous slides, when did we finally make the decision? Finally made the decision in April. From that time forward, in November to April, there was a lot of community meetings, there was a lot of feedback from staff, students, board members, community, and that feedback gave us the opportunity to have even a better outcome. It was time consuming, it was a great deal of work, but that opportunity to have that dialogue with our community forced us as well to go back and keep looking, well, what if we change this, how could we adjust this? So then now you're going to see in the presentation, we have several different options. We had delay Radnor High School by 55 minutes, and then we listed why it was developed and why it was eliminated. This was important for our public. We felt that our public really couldn't discuss this and debate this topic, and our teachers and our students couldn't really discuss this and debate it, if they can't see exactly what it would look like, and what are the pros and cons to each one? There is no perfect schedule. Your schedule, I was a former high school principal, I can tell you right now, the schedule you have right now is not perfect. There's no perfect schedules that are out there, so it is weighing of options. So each one of these options, we put out there to our community, but why we developed, and then why it was eliminated ultimately is, you know, is now that we moved forward. So that was, this was the example 55, we had an example for elementary, starting first. I got to tell you, my favorite still, we were unable to do that, I still think that it makes a lot of sense to start the elementary kids earlier, I'm a father of six kids, three are out of the house now, three are in the house, but young kids are up earlier. We had a lot of elementary teachers who really wanted to see us move the elementary program earlier. But at the time, we had some of our elementary parents concerned that we were possibly taking what was a high school issue, like our elementary parents were like, you're right, you need to start the high school later, but they weren't quite sure, but do you really want to start the elementary an hour earlier, how do you do that? But I do think if we ever went back to look at this, this would be an option I would want to look more closely at. The current start for high school, middle school, we looked very carefully at that option. We looked at the push, I think if we were doing this now, we would have called this the brotherly shove. We were having fun with the different names we were coming up with for all these different, different ways of doing it, but this was a push. We had a flip, if we could flip them. And then our final recommendation. And again, our final recommendation, you can see it has information on why we recommended it at the time. And I will tell you again, I was hesitant as superintendent to do something that was going to be too expensive, because I was looking at our budget, and I also was trying to figure out what made sense for us. Having done this now, I would be willing to have, I would have been willing to have spent more money because of the impact we saw on the culture and the climate of our high school. If someone came to me and said, this one thing will impact positively all the kids, what would we spend on that? We spend a lot on additional mental health supports in our district now, especially after COVID. This is one thing you can do that impacts the entire student body positively. More information on the final recommendation, just moving through, trying to keep to the time schedule here, opportunities for feedback. We did, as much feedback, we received a ton of feedback as we went through this process of doing it. But we also then, after we enacted the change in 2019, we went back to our community with feedback, and we have continued to tweak it. So how did we eventually wind up doing this? We did it through a combination of things, we did condense our school day at the high school, so we squeezed homeroom, we squeezed passing time by a minute, so that's the way, we didn't have to move it a full hour. We created a course called Fitness for Athletes, at the end of the day. We looked at who had the early dismissals for athletics. Turns out, it's not every sport that has early dismissals. Your biggest problems sports are golf, cross country, tennis, you know, football never has a problem. They don't have early dismissals for football. Basketball rarely has a early dismissal. So we had to look at what sports were the challenging sports where the kids might need to get out early. We created a fitness for athletes, their phys ed class at the end of the day. Had to hand schedule them, so let's work for the high school administration to hand schedule as many as we could into that course. We have since now evolved, and actually we removed physical education as a requirement, 10th, 11th and 12th grade. As we started to put fitness to athletes, we started to have a conversation about this requirement for phys ed, and it sparked us to make physical education in 10th, 11th and 12th grade is now an elective for our students. And now what we try to do is, the athletes that might have an early dismissal, we try to hand schedule them with a free period at the end of the day. It's not perfect, we can't always do that, but it's something that we're mindful of as we develop the schedule each year. We had parent surveys, PTO, feedback as we did this. And then community feedback post the change. Again, a lot of positive feedback we heard, we heard so many comments, and we'll let our kids talk to that at a moment. I have a video from our students, it's only three minutes long, but areas for adjustment. Besides the physical education change, we also realized that, you know, looking at our schedule, we'd made some adjustments with how we handle tutoring, we have tutoring now after school for our students, knowing that our kids need some opportunities, that if they're leaving school early for athletics, or if there's a challenge, there's more opportunities for after school tutoring that we give. We did have adjustments over traffic and the fitness for athletes I already mentioned. Another changes, as I've just mentioned, the extended learning program, Lunch and Learn is something we've added as well, two days a week. We have an hour of lunch for everybody in the building at the high school, and that's an opportunity for kids to see teachers. And that hour of Lunch and Learn is another opportunity where students can get support two days a week during the school day. So the last piece I have for you is, what we did was, before it starts, I just want to set this up. We asked our current students, but first, we have some of the students that were very involved in this to begin with, from four years ago speaking, a parent who speaks, and then we have some of our current students, we went out. And our current students, I went to our communications department, who just went out and filled them, and I said, did you script them? Because after they spoke, I was so impressed with what they had to say. I'll turn it over to our students for just three minutes.
It's necessary to point out to people that getting more sleep is actually something that can change your life positively, that it is something that has a real effect on your life.
I think pointing to student behavior in class, for example, lack of attention or drowsiness in class. It's things like that, pointing out that just because we've done ways, in a certain way in the past, doesn't mean that it's the right or the best way to do it.
Starting school later and making sleep a priority enabled my high school boys to get about eight hours of sleep most nights. Getting that much sleep made a huge difference. Both boys felt more alert during their first period classes. They had more energy, felt more productive and prepared, had less anxiety and noticed improvements in their athletic abilities as well. My daughter continues to benefit from the later start times, and my boys learned to prioritize sleep, even went away at college.
Now that we're on the other side, I can say with full confidence and with no qualifiers, that everybody should do this.
Well, I think the change that was made a couple of years ago has been really beneficial to our school district and to high schoolers specifically. And I think it just, it shows that Radnor High School is willing to make change and do things that, you know, wasn't necessarily something that had been done previously, but, you know, take a turn that will ultimately benefit our students from a mental health perspective.
On a typical school night, I usually go to bed around 12 or 1:00 in the morning.
On a school night, I typically go to bed between 12 and 1:00.
On a typical school night, I go to bed between 12 and 1:00 AM.
I usually wake up between 7:00 and 7:30.
On a school day, I typically wake up around 7:45.
Here as a senior, I typically wake up at 7:00. Now that I'm placing more importance on my sleep schedule this year, I'm also able to manage my schedule better as it pertains to homework and extracurriculars.
I think the later start time has like, first off, allowed me to like eat breakfast in the morning. The later start, it also like helps improve like time management skills and organizational skills.
I'm someone who thrives with a routine, and I think that extra hour gives me the opportunity to really establish a healthy routine for my day.
I personally know how harmful sleep deprivation is to the developing brain, because while we sleep, we do consolidate everything we learn from the day. And from, speaking from personal experience, I know how hard it is to perform well in school when you barely get any sleep.
I think it is more like aligned with like an adolescent's sleep patterns.
I'm not necessarily a morning person, so I'm given that time to wake up a little bit more and prepare myself for the day ahead.
If school started at 7:35, I don't think I'd sleep an hour earlier, I think I'd probably fall asleep at the same time.
If I were to wake up that early instead of 8:30, I think I'd be tired the whole day and then feel more inclined to nap after school, which then makes me start my homework later and then go to bed later. I believe that Radnor truly cares about their students, and this isn't only seen through all the help and resources offered to us, but it also is shown through the courage, the care and time it took into changing our start time.
When we were making the change in 2019, you know, I'll be honest, I was a little scared. If anybody knows where Radnor is, Radnor is very close to the Blue Root. If anybody knows where Radnor is, Radnor is very close to the Blue Route. Uh, we have corporate areas very close to our high school. And I thought we were going to move grid, we were going to create gridlock because everybody wasn't going to be ready for the fact that the traffic patterns are now an hour later. And I was coming to, to, you know, realize that, okay, it's been nice working in Radnor and this could be the end of Ken Bachelor. Once we have all this traffic as we, as we move school start time. Things I didn't think about and realize was that quote from Chloe, our last student. Our community looked at it as an opportunity for us to try to do something to make a difference for the kids. And our community bought into it as, let's try this. Can we do it? And we said, as we did this, we're trying it. It might not work. If it doesn't work, we will look at adjusting. We have to be better at educate, in education of saying, let's try things. Let's look to do things to improve. The other piece that came away from me through all of this is that I believe it is one hundred percent true that kids have a time that they go to bed. They go to bed a certain time. When you move the high school an hour later, they don't stay up an hour later. They go to bed what time they go to bed. And then that's why this works is because they then wind up getting that extra hour of sleep. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is we have several parents that are with us tonight, just to help if there's questions and answers. Um, so we can open up to questions and answers. And I just wanted to also that last quote on one of our slides, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good, um, of good. Uh, and that's something that we discussed as we went through this because we're, we started to really look for the perfect schedule. And then we realized, let's look at our current schedule. What's all the problems and challenges we have with our current schedule? Um, so don't let perfect be the enemy of good. So we'll open it up. Do you have any last comments or open up?
I'd just like to say from a board perspective, this is something that we're, we have three pillars. We do our goal setting each year. We put them, we have generally worked with our superintendent, I'm sure much like you do to come up with your agenda for the year, what you'd like to see happen in your school district. And we have three pillars in which all of our goals fall into wellness, achievement and belonging. And wellness is on top of our minds, has always been one of those pillars. But especially now coming out of the pandemic, nothing could be more important and prominent than wellness from a physical and mental health standpoint. There is nothing out there that impacts students across the board in a more substantive and positive sense than letting each and every one of them have the benefit of more sleep and appropriately timed sleep. Cause it's not just about more sleep, it's about appropriately timed sleep. And sometimes students don't even realize that they have that biological need. That's why an educational component to this for students is so important that, so that I'm looking at the students over there, so that they understand their own biology. Hi there. And sometimes they don't realize how good a change can be until after they've actually had it. And it's not just in one night, it's day after day, after school day, after school day. You're honoring their biologically driven rhythms. And the investment that you make when you divide it by the number of students who are going to be impacted in any given year comes down to something for our district, cause our district is about the same size as yours, a little bit smaller. You're about fifty-one hundred students. We're about thirty-six hundred students. We spent about two hundred thousand dollars on this initiative in order to find the additional, uh, bus capacity that we needed to make this change. Cause we also service, we send students to more than just our five district schools, much like you do. We go to seventy-some schools and have to figure out those logistics. But when you divide the, uh, number of students by the amount of money that you're spending, it actually came down to about thirty, forty dollars a student for the year to make a difference every day in their mental and physical wellbeing. You can't get a therapy appointment for that. So this is something that substantively changes their lives for the better. And it is, comes at a cost that really is incomparable to anything else that you could possibly spend any on to make them feel better. And it affects every student, because every student, it's an equity matter too. Every student gets an opportunity to feel better because they're having more sleep as evidenced by our students. So I just wanted to mention that if, if I could, and that really resonated with our board as we were going through our decision-making process.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, first of all, thank you so much, not just for the presentation tonight, but you both have been so helpful throughout this entire process. Um, so thank you for that as well. Um, I guess one of the questions I have, um, is the community input that you've received along the way and how you went about receiving that. We did a community survey early on in the process and probably that was a mistake because we didn't have really information out there yet at that point. Like we really should have waited until we had, you know, exactly what it was going to look like. Like we didn't show anyone, okay, this is what the schedule is. This is how aftercare is going to look. This is what your sports schedule is going to look like. So we kind of jumped the gun and asked before we actually showed everyone what it was going to look like. Um, so that was the community input we've received. We've asked for people to give us feedback also, like written comments. But what other types of feedback and what kind of surveys have you done throughout the process?
We hesitate about surveys. That is a.
We, we debate this often. I'm not a big believer in surveys. I'm a big believer in feedback. Having as many opportunities for people to give feedback, community to give feedback, have sessions. But I think you have to be careful about, about, uh, surveys. And I just go back to as a parent in Westchester School District, where my kids go many years ago, they did a survey on spring break and they asked, do you want a full week of spring break or we, can we shorten spring break? And vast majority said, keep spring break a, a week. And then the school district came out three weeks later and said, we're shortening spring break. Um, so it was one of those, why did you ask everybody a question that became a vote for the community and then you did the opposite? Um, so you already had, you already, you already knew a decision already had been made. So I think you got to be careful with surveys. I think you bring the community involved when you have something you want to have feedback on. So we're investigating school start times. We then surveyed and said, here are some options. Come to this evening meeting. We invited people to the meeting. At the evening meeting, we gave opportunities for feedback. We did do times where we emailed the community and we said to the community, please write to us, give us your feedback. What are your thoughts on this? But we were careful not to make it a vote. If I went out to the staff in the beginning and I said to high school teachers, we want to move school start time an hour later. I mean, they, they, they resoundingly wouldn't want to do it. Uh, high school, as somebody who's a high school teacher and a high school principal, it, they're, they're hard organizations to change. Through the meetings, we had at least four different faculty meetings just on this topic. We received the feedback from the teachers and then we went back to them and we explained to them, okay, here were your concerns. Here's how we can address them. And then here are the things we can't address. You know, you're, you, you will be coming an hour later to school if we make this change. So I would encourage those feedback sessions more, more than surveys. I think there's a time to get feedback though, that is critical. Is that helpful?
I'd also like to add if I may, President Ginsburg, that education about the science is really important. Even though this research has been out now for quite some time. It's not everybody knows of it. And we spent a lot of time educating the community. We held student assemblies. We had parent gatherings. We had faculty gatherings. We had administrative gatherings. We wanted everybody to understand why we were spending so much time and energy before, on this subject, before we asked them to give us their reaction to it. So we probably had, uh, sleep experts visit us maybe three, four, five times over the course of the time that we were looking into this. Because we really wanted people, whether they agreed with the science or not, we wanted them to understand why it was we were spending so much time and energy on doing this. And then we asked for feedback, but we really wanted to make sure that we were all starting from a consistent information basis before we asked for feedback. And Dr. Bachelor not only asked for community feedback. There were meetings held at each of the elementary school buildings and the middle school building and the high school building and parent nights and he went into classrooms. The health teachers were talking about it. So really was everybody started with the same foundational knowledge about this subject? Then the feedback, if they wouldn't come to us, we would go to them. I say we, it was really the administration, but I felt like I was really part of the effort. Um, cause I believe so passionately in this. But we would make sure we went, we went to people if they didn't come to us. And eventually I'll never forget you sharing with me a comment that a community member made towards the very end as it was getting closer to the board vote. And one community member sent to you at one of these meetings, I still am not sure I agree, but I'm tired of hearing about the science. I could recite it in my sleep. So the person knew the science, but was still sort of hung up on making a change or the logistical issues. And at this point, I, I suffice it to say, we've been at this for five years. Do you hear anything about people talking? I mean, uh, we don't hear anything about students complaining, staff complaining, parents complaining. In fact, there are, there are many people who didn't realize just how much of a difference that would make in their lives. Parents who say, my children actually joined me for breakfast. They actually have smiles on their faces. I can tell you the first time I saw a high school school bus going by as I was driving around the community. And for the first time, the kids were slumped against the side of the bus. They were actually sitting up and they didn't even have hoods on. So I, I was like, if that's the only evidence I need that students feel better. It was amazing to see them sitting up. At first I thought they must be elementary school students, but they, then I realized they were too big. But they weren't slumped against the side of the seat. And that, I mean, it's, it's just changed their lives for the better, but it, nothing's ever perfect. The schedule can't be perfect. There will be people who have to make adaptations here and there. And, but at the end of the day, when your family is feeling better and your children are feeling better and performing better, it's all worth it in the end. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
It was a long-winded answer, but hopefully I got to what you were looking for.
Yes, thank you.
I know you guys have other things on the agenda.
Yes. Are there any other questions, Marshall?
Uh, I do. Um, one of the concerns that we've had, listening to our students is the worry about after school, transitioning things in an hour, uh, affects babysitting. It affects jobs. It affects being able to do those things, then get home, try to eat with the family, then start doing work. What did you do in that regard, uh, to find out how that would impact your students? If they, uh, miss out potentially on opportunities, um, to work in the afternoon if they're an hour later than what they are used to doing. We want to keep them from, from doing it.
For one second, but I just wanted to establish that just because if you were to move your start time back an hour, doesn't necessarily mean that your dismissal time needs to be an hour. That is one of the challenges that the administrative team solved in how to find other efficiencies within the day. And I think if you were to ask any members of our student community, we have not had to disband any athletic competitions or miss any of them. No one's lost a job over it. No one has been unable to complete homework and other things. Some of those things are preconceived notions that you can understand, but the change might cause some anxiety, but in reality, those are all things that end up working out pretty well. So I'll let Dr. Bachelor speak to those more specifically.
Right. And we did, that was an issue for us. And I, and I, and, and the early dismissals is still an issue. We, we work very hard to try to hand schedule the kids who would have early dismissals, but that's not perfect. And that's still an issue for us. And a lot of it comes down to us working, asking other school districts. We, we encounter other school districts who want to have games earlier. And we're saying, can't you just be a half hour? And they could be a half hour later with an away game. Um, but they're just sometimes not willing because the coach doesn't want to, you know, the, the JV or freshman tennis coach wants to get home earlier. Has nothing to do with lights, has nothing to do with anything else. Um, so it, it has been in, in Delaware County, the other superintendents have been very supportive and tried to work with us. Cause you set the time for your home games at what time they start and you have the authority to do that. At least we do in the central league in Delaware County. But it's when we go to those away games. So we reached out to those, to all the districts and we said, can you help us with this? It wasn't enormous, but sometimes it was a half hour we needed. We only changed, again, wasn't a full hour, it was forty minutes. School was ending at two, roughly two thirty and now it was ending at three ten. We did call some of the local businesses and found out where the kids were working, said, how does this change employment? Lawyer said it would make no change. They, they come when they, right after, they'll just come in now when school ends. That's not a problem for us. Um, we haven't found any problems with kids finding jobs. We haven't found any problems with the daycare issue was a bit of a, a myth. That was a big issue that there was older kids and it needing to be home at a certain time. And would that be an issue? That has not been, that never came to fruition as an issue. The biggest challenge has been sports and scheduling of away games, uh, has been our biggest challenge.
Good questions.
Other questions?
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your time in the presentation. Um, did you add a bus route or did you always have a triple tier?
We always had a triple tier. So we looked at trying to do, um, going to like a two-tier. We investigated that. And one of the other things I left off of this, while we were looking at it, we did keep the option of our current. So that was one of the options at one point. At one point as we were looking at this, we did look at, here's our current. Cause as we're looking at things, what makes the most sense with Radnor and under this idea of no decisions have been made, our current way of doing it was an option. What happened for us as we went through this process was the community hearing so much about the sleep, hearing so much said, let's figure, can we figure out a way to do this? So no, we wound up staying with it, with a, with a three-tier system was the most efficient for us. And, and, and I can't emphasize enough, the key to this was a transportation director and a dispatcher and a high school principal, Mr. Beck told was going to be here with us. He was the high school principal at the time who led the committee. He's now the assistant, uh, to the superintendent. Uh, he couldn't make it tonight. He's sorry for not being here. But those three people and their problem solving ability was un, was just remarkable. And they would come to me with different options. We'd come to the board and then I'd go back to them. I go, well, what if, what if we move this by five minutes? Or you tried to move this? What does this mean? And we eventually had to hire, um, some substitute coverage for the dispatcher, um, to just cover his day. So he could sit in a room with the high school principal, uh, and the transportation director and just look at this, because it's a puzzle. It's just a huge puzzle, but it takes a lot of time to figure it out.
Uh, sorry for that, but, um, no, and a follow-up to that is, you know, post-COVID, we've had like a lot of hurdles with bus drivers and kind of just staffing. So you're, uh, you've had a triple tier, you've maintained a triple tier. And you've been successful in, in keeping and maintaining drivers for your district this whole time?
I'm knocking on wood. We've been successful in this. As I was actually on the phone with the transportation director today and, and I, you know, and he said, I just, just interviewed two more. I get these two on board. We're going to be fully staffed. So transportation is one of those areas, um, that we were very lucky during COVID. Um, but since then, there, it is a challenge like all of the different, um, all of the different departments in, in education right now. It is hard to find, uh, people. We, we are right now staffed that all our bus runs are running. Um, my transportation, our transportation director is sometimes driving a bus in the morning. As soon as we get these two on board, uh, he won't be doing that anymore. Um, so, but we're, everyone's having that challenge regardless of this change. That's been a challenge that's out there.
And then final question for sports, I understand the travel like for games, but how about the actual practice time? Has that been adjusted at all or reevaluated? Like, are they still practicing for the same duration? Like, how did that change or not change?
Actually, it, it sparked a very good discussion about how long should a practice be? Uh, and, and that's something that we're continuing to look at and work at, because athletics is such an important opportunity. And somebody who, who coached and played athletics and my kids are involved, that is another learning opportunity. That's an opportunity that, um, has a, a huge impact on our kids. And we don't need three-hour practices. If you're going three hours, that is too long of a practice. Um, so it did give us an opportunity to look at how long are our practices, uh, and what makes sense for, for a practice. Um, we've had very, you know, I worked at Unionville Chad's Ford before I came to Radnor, where we were looking at this very topic as I was leaving. And I kind of left and went, oh, good, you know, good luck. Yeah. I was leading the committee and let me know how it works out. And I came to Radnor and it was, it was an issue that had been around in Radnor and we needed to tackle it right away. Um, but I'll tell you, Unionville does share often that their athletic, you know, their, their teams have done better since they made the change that they made. Um, our teams have been very successful. We've, 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 you know, I can't say, I, I, I hesitate to say this because of school's dark time, but we've had some very successful teams since then. And it's had been an opportunity to look at what makes sense for how long a practice should be. Did they have to change? No. The other issue community-wise, I think it's from, uh, Mr., our Marshall, I think, so I can't really believe, I can't even, was our, our, we are the fields for our community. Radnor High School has, we, we, we do provide a lot of the athletic fields for our community. And that was one of the big concerns was would we push the community practices later? And it actually became, was something that wasn't an issue for us. The community practice still were able to begin at a time that worked for all those community practices. Um, because we already had a little bit of a cushion in there. It just tightened the time the kids were leaving by the time the younger kids were getting on the field.
And Zevi, I will say also to your question, there is abundant research out there that shows that when students get more sleep, there is a lower incidence of injury, including concussion, that they perform more efficiently in their practices and they get better athletic outcomes. So the fact that Unionville and Radnor say that they're seeing some success in their sports teams and don't want to necessarily make that overt correlation. If sleep scientists like Dr. Claus in the room, I know, were thinking to themselves, well, it's not a coincidence. It's because there is research out there, plenty of it, that shows that when athletes get more sleep and more appropriate time, time sleep, they perform better. In fact, many of the professional sports leagues today in, in the National Hockey League, in Major League Baseball and, and et cetera, have sleep coaches, including the Phillies. And, um, in fact, their trip out to the West Coast recently for the playoffs where they, you know, they decided what day to fly out based on the recommendation of their sleep coach. I think that the athletics community is basically trying, has, has embraced the idea that sleep is critically important to reducing injury and enhancing performance in athletics. And once the athletics community really begins to appreciate that, they probably will be more inclined to come along with this and not look at it simply as a logistical issue. It's actually can be a performance enhancing issue as well.
The year we changed the cross-country team, you know, the kids on the cross-country team self-reported that they felt they were running their best cross-country season. Um, and they attributed, a lot of them contributed to the extra sleep that fall. Um, and they attributed, a lot of them contributed to the extra sleep that fall.
And then hence need, you know, less time in practices. That's real, where we'd really like to see the evolution of this movement go. Is that, that the athletics community really looks at the time they're devoting to athletic practice? And maybe you don't need as much of it if your students are getting more sleep and performing better. So that's um something to keep in mind and have conversations about as well.
Quick question. You, you said you didn't survey the teachers because you thought the outcome would not be, they wouldn't be in favor of it essentially. Um, since you implemented it though, like have, have you gotten any feedback from the teachers? Have you lost any teaching staff? Have you lost any coaches or extracurricular leaders from your staff because of the ta- change?
I don't think we've, I, we don't know of anybody we've lost because of the change. I mean, I don't know anyone that's come to my level or HR level that we've lost because of that change. I will tell you, it is hard for the teachers from the standpoint of childcare. You know, cause now you're gonna disrupt when school starts and you know, what is their childcare arrangement? So we tried to by April, give them enough lead time so they could figure that out and, and have that opportunity. We also then adjusted, just because the kids can't come in, doesn't mean faculty means can't happen in the morning instead of the afternoon. So whereas things would, that would happen with the staff um in the, you know, previously in the afternoon, we moved some of those things to the morning for the staff and the staff really appreciated that. We also gave some flexibility with the staff. Some staff can come in at the high school right before the school day starts. Instead of what was usually, you had to be there like fifteen, twenty minutes. And then it's like, it's split in thirds. A third of them have to be there to be there for the kids. But others can get there right before, you know, that homeroom before the school day starts. And then they stay later and others are there earlier. So it gave us some flexibility to how we could work with the staff. Um, our staff, I think, have appreciated um some of that flexibility. They appreciated when the change was made. Um, the feeling of how awake the kids were. Um, you know, that fall, they noticed the difference. Uh, they sensed the difference. They sensed the difference with referrals. We were, we had fewer um referrals at the time. We had our psychologist who was seeing less kids for different issues um within October, November of that first change as compared to the, the previous year.
Now, and I think this is also, we teach our students to prepare for real world, critical thinking to solve real world problems. And this is one of the examples where in students were, are a part of, that were a part of the committee. And they were watching the adults in the room take a critical problem, take a, a real world problem and apply critical sol- uh, problem solving skills to it. And even with childcare, that, that was sort of one of those things that bubbled up that you didn't necessarily anticipate. But to your point again, we built the, the childcare issue, we realized that we could do a better job of providing childcare overall. And, and it prompted us to actually change childcare providers and provide extended hours for a better service and less amount of money. So that was sort of a collateral um benefit that we hadn't even anticipated. But as part of the critical problem solving that was applied to this situation, we solved more problems than we initially thought we would.
Yeah, go.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to start. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was, it was wonderful. You guys are fantastic speakers. But um, I noticed a lot of big claims were made and, and generalizations. So one thing I'm curious about is you had said that, and forgive me if I butcher this, but you had said that you hadn't heard anything about the, the whole job thing being a myth. So like students that, uh, the employment wasn't affected by the change. And I'm, I'm just curious in the sense of, I understand, and some of us who work for fun to go to Rita's and make, it, it, it wouldn't really affect us, but there is a student body. A lot of my friends either work to support for their family or they work to, they have to get home and, and uh help their siblings. So I understand you may not have heard from them, but I just am curious how you keep that in mind. Cause I know my friends that live that way, aren't the type to advocate for it. And I'm not trying to make a stance. I'm just generally trying to further my understanding of this entire complex machine. But I'm just curious if you have any sort of systems in place that are there to assist those students that may not have a loud voice, but have loud needs.
So we did, we have a lot of students who do go right to work after school and they would work right in the community. And some of them would actually work, you know, walk right to jobs right in Wayne. Um, and we reached out to those employers to say, is this first off, A, gonna jeopardize their job? And they said, no. And they said, what if they come to their job now forty minutes later? Is that gonna be a problem for you as an employer? Uh, and they said, no, we will, we will make that work. We'll still have them employed. Now, does that mean they're working to make the same amount of money forty minutes later in the evening? Yes, that's potentially, you know, possible what's happening, you know, in order to make that same amount of money that the kids were making prior to this change in twenty nineteen, those kids that are working would have to work a little bit. But again, those were, we would put everything on the scales to balance out. And we were confident that kids weren't losing jobs because of it. We're confident that the employers that were hiring our kids locally were still taking our kids, you know, for those jobs. And then the, the, the myth piece I said was the, the childcare issue, that the, the high school kids had to get home earlier. We heard that as a resounding concern and the more we pushed, we found out that there, there, it was, it was, it, that was not a huge concern. That was not a very large concern. Now, I come from, again, I've got a lot of kids and my kids are responsible. The older ones have been responsible for watching the younger ones at times. So it all depends on that family, you know, dynamic.
And some of the problem solving for this, it goes within the family to try to make these adjustments. And that might not be stuff that we're necessarily privy to, but families have to make adjustments all the time for different things. A parent changes the job or you have something else that happens within a family, things need to be adjusted. So this was another thing that was adjusted and given the givens, it's again, there isn't necessarily always, if you start an hour later, that you end an hour later. You can find through the administrative investigation of this efficiencies perhaps in your school day and how things are run. We cut down the passing time, I think, between classes for a minute over a course of a day. That's saving eight minutes from the end of the day because you have to hustle a little bit to get from one class to the next, a little bit more than you did before. Restructured the look, the way the lunch hours worked, et cetera. So there are ways that the administration can potentially shave down whatever time it is that, to maximize the time the student, later for the students to come to school and take off as much of the impact at the end of the day as possible. And you're welcome to talk to our, our students love to talk about this. And some of them have actually gone around to other school districts and held student council to student council conversations about, well, this is what, how I thought about it before the change and what, these were my concerns. This is what I'm experiencing now and it answer any concerns for students who haven't had, haven't gone through this so far. So that's also an option. We, we, our students go around quite a bit and love to talk about this with other students if you wanted to talk to any of them.
And I, I meet with kids routinely. This is no longer an issue. You know, this, the, the school start time doesn't come up when I, you know, talk to kids. Um, so I was, that's why I was so intrigued to hear our current kids and what they had to say. Um, the, those most recent uh student government leadership. Uh, because when we talk to our kids now about issues about the school, it's about, you know, other things going on, other dynamics, other things about lunch and learn or how can we improve this or, you know, why aren't we offering this level math this year or this, this pieces? This is not something that, you know, it's been in place for a while. So it's, it's, it's now something people are, the kids are really appreciative of. Uh, that's the one thing that I'm hearing from students when I do talk to them is that they couldn't envision going back.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Um, I think it's very admirable, the sense that you guys have for that one student. And you look out for individual ones. That's, that's awesome. Um, I think one thing I took from presentation is that I absolutely agree with you. It seemed like a lot of that was like sleep is good. Totally agree. I, I'm so happy to get to go home and get in my bed later. Like, that's gonna be great. But um, I, I definitely, I, I agree with a lot that you, a lot of what you said in the sense that um the accommodations may or may not outweigh the decision. But um, I definitely agree with you. Sleep is good, but it's a complex machine. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a matter of identifying those challenges and can, can we say, can you overcome those? You know, and then you have to weigh those and say, does this make sense as you try to overcome those different challenges? Not every teacher's gonna wanna do this. Not every kid's gonna wanna do this. Not every parent's gonna wanna do this. But through that dialogue, we found, and this what really did surprise me was those two in comments, that overall, our community fought this. Overall, I have not been part of something in a school district and I've been part of projects. I've been twenty-eight years in education. That is just, once we did it, so universally appreciated by the community. That has been the piece that has, that is, that has surprised me is how universally appreciated it has been.
No. Well, this is the, this is the presentation to the board. Community will have an opportunity for public comment. This is not an opportunity for public comment. We'll have an opportunity for public comment in a few minutes. All right. So any other board comments or questions? Yes. Blake has, Blake has a question.
As a student, the first thing that I think about, and particularly an under, upperclassman now, um, is homework. And we've discussed this in previous meetings about how much homework we have and it's maybe even now an issue. And we've thought about talking to teachers about it, but to me, pushing it back, that's my first concern is would I be going to bed later? Because right now, I mean, I'm a senior doing college applications, but even throughout my junior year, I would be going to bed when my homework was done. Um, so I'm just curious how you guys deal with that or have dealt with that.
So that was one of the other things, just like athletics and what we did with physical education. There's so many things that came out of this. And one of the discussions at the time in, in, in the spring of twenty nineteen when we passed this, was this homework and how, you know, the, the load that our kids were feeling, high achieving high school like your high school. Um, and we've got kids and, and I will tell you, we've got kids and I'm sure in, in Radnor, I'm sure it's similar in Wesick and where my kids go in Westchester. We're working some of the kids too hard and some of the kids were not working hard enough. And, and it's really hard for us as an organization to make sure we hit that right balance because some of them were doing, they're, they're pushing themselves too hard and some of them we need to push a little bit more. Um, so we committed to the community that we would then study homework. Uh, COVID hit uh in, in, in March of twenty twenty and that put that homework study on pause. We went back to that homework study actually last year. So we put together a committee to evaluate homework in our process. And we're actually just in the middle of looking at a new policy towards homework. Uh, and trying to, you know, and, and that committee was, had teachers, had parents, had students, um, community members involved in it to really wrap our heads around what's happening um with homework and what should be the rule for weekends? What should be the rule for extended breaks? Um, you know, and, and you know, what should we be doing with assignments? How much time should kids be spending on homework? We've also added um more supports between the lunch and learn. We also have a virtual, every night of the week, we have uh, an online opportunity where we have teachers manning uh help desk basically for the kids. So it started off as an after school help. Now it's a, it's, it's a Zoom opportunity at night with different subject areas and all to try to tackle that issue. But we have a new homework policy. It's gonna be worked on this fall and, and hopefully it's gonna address some of those pieces.
I just saw the draft. It looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, but Blake, also one other thing I wanted to mention to you, you probably heard it in the testimonial from one of the students. She doesn't have to go home and take a nap anymore because, and that helps her with efficiency. She was so tired before that part of the delay in doing homework was that she needed to go to sleep in, prior to being able to attend it, to it. And I don't think that was just her story. I think that was for a lot of students. I have two, had two teenagers at the time we made this change as well. And they would come home and they'd fall onto the sofa and then an hour, hour and a half later, they'd get up and start their day. They have more, and you would have more energy. And there's a ton of research, just like with athletics, that shows that you have a more, uh, stronger cognition and ability to attend to homework when you're better rested and have more appropriately timed sleep. Just remember that it's not just about more sleep, it's timing the sleep to your natural circadian rhythm. So that when your melatonin starts ebbing and flowing in your body, you will be getting up at a time that your body is actually ready for it and you'll be going to sleep at a time that your body is ready for it. And you might find that doing, you'll be more efficient in doing your homework than you think. So.
We, and we put together our homework committee last spring. We had teachers on it. And we had teachers from the high school who sat there and said, oh my goodness. And we, we have the policy, you know, the previous policy, we're looking to prove that policy. And we had teachers that went, oh my gosh, I don't know that I read this before or saw this. So we, in education, we need to do more to professional development for our teachers and staff about homework as well.
Any other board members?
Amy, I, I, I do have some more questions. Um, and I know how incredibly important this is. I would like to cede my time to the parents in the room who would like to answer some que- like to ask some questions. And I think, I think that if we just allow people under the circumstances to, because I think this is a wonderful in informational topic. Um, I, I would like to cede my time in that regard and, and see if they can ask questions.
Let me just check with Michelle if that's permissible under our policy. Okay, so. All right, so we'll allow ten minutes of questions.
I didn't have any more than ten minutes. I had a few, but I think that's fair to people have a.
Okay.
If they're kind enough to, to stay in.
Oh, we're fine. Thank you.
Yeah, you have time. I don't wanna take up more of your time either. Okay, yeah.
They're employed by Radnor. Yeah, let me just, I want to repeat the question for the mic. Sure. The que- the question was, was are our bus drivers employed by Radnor? And yes, they are employed by Radnor. Are high school uh sports practices after school? Yes, our practices are after school. Swimming does happen in the morning, not every day. And we, when we made this change, we committed to saying that practices now can't switch to the morning. Just because we're doing this, we don't want all the, all of a sudden, everybody to be having practice in the morning. But we did say that existing teams like swimming, the practice in the morning, would, could still practice in the morning, but they would be now an hour later. So a, a lot of the, the conclusions we came to and it, you know, was feedback, was surveys that we did with our fan. I talked about how I'm not a fan of surveys. We did do feedback. We, after we made the change, um, give us feedback on how this is going. Um, you know, feedback on is this working? Um, and it was a lot of positive feedback. We did that with our staff. We did that also with, um, you know, with, with our, with our community as well to give us feedback and talking to the kids on how is it going. Um, I was, I will say that the, the, the after school dismissal thing is still an issue when we do the schedule and we don't get enough of those kids who have those sports that have early dismissals into a free period. It does become a challenge for us and that's work for our high school administration to hand schedule those kids.
One thing, and, and we made the change in the spring, uh, April of twenty nineteen and began this initiative in the nineteen twenties school year. Just so happened I was running for reelection in twenty nineteen. And I can tell you from banging on about three thousand doors with my fellow candidates, that I got a lot of positive feedback from the door. People who had not said a word about anything were talking about the fact that they had really, because it started in September of the school year. So I was out on the street in October and early November and got a lot of feedback from people who answered the doors, who had students in the school saying, this is better than I ever imagined. I thought it was gonna, I, I didn't think I'd like this, but boy, has it really opened my eyes. And I mean, you can ask any one of my fellow candidates, I'd be happy to tell you that was, there was really positive feedback coming from people who weren't necessarily the people who were responding to surveys.
No problem.
No, I, I, I can't say, yeah, the, the question was, did we notice any enhanced um scholastic, scholastic or academic improvement with the change? Um, we went into this knowing we're a high achieving high school before we made the change. Um, it was a high achieving high school where we, we did well. Um, you know, we don't, I don't have, I can't sit here and say this specific thing has gone up. I will tell you, in the last four years, we've continued to climb. Um, I can't, is it because of this? Is it because we've got after school tutoring? Is it because we've, you know, done an early learning program? I mean, there's so many different things we're doing. Is it our multiple tier, tier system of supports? Um, but so we have been seeing improvements. Um, you know, during COVID, I, I think our, our, our elementary hybrid was probably our best reading program because it was one teacher with ten kids for half a day. Um, so it, so it, that had a really positive impact. So it's hard to put your finger to. I, so I can't sit here and say to you, school start time is why our kids are achieving better when they were achieving well before that.
And I think Dr. Bachelor makes a good point. There is research out there that shows, for example, when the Erie Public School System made their change to a later school start time, they compared data between a high achieving, more affluent high school in, within Erie and a, one that was more economically disadvantaged. And the more economically disadvantaged high school did show in the research that they made academic gains in the way that the one that was already more affluent and performing high, at a higher level, didn't to quite that extent. So, you know, I'm sure Wesick and much like Radnor is a high achieving suburban school district. So that's not really what you would necessarily go into it as one of your um most salient outcomes. The other things, particularly mental and physical well-being, is one of the driving. is one of the driving forces that is is the is why many of us in this these types of communities do this.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was at the time of the change, the research, there is compelling research to show that even high achieving districts, students who struggled learning had the had the most impact from a time change, like the study you just shared and and additional other studies. So that was something that was compelling to us.
And one of the reasons why they saw the gains in the lower in the more challenged socio economically challenged school district was because when those students couldn't make it to school at those early hours, they tended to be truant. And so with the later school start time, they were able to get up and catch the bus, even if there wasn't a parent there to see them off. And the more time that students spend in school, they're going to do better. So that was really how they tied later school start time academic gains to that more economically disadvantaged school district. You're welcome.
So so the question is, any any studies post high school that, you know, what might have harmed kids? Or, you know, when they got out into the workforce, because it started later? One of and and I'll let if anybody else wants to jump in and has an answer, but I I I'll just say we searched so hard during this process for the alternative of this. Where's the information about the districts that changed and then went back? And we found one somewhere, and I'm trying to remember where it was. And, you know, sadly, it was a situation, one of them was, they had done the flip, and then there had been an accident at a bus stop in the dark, and then they 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 changed back after they moved the change. We had a hard time finding any research or any information about why this is a bad idea. There's some out there, but I had a challenge finding it. What fair statement? What? Same one came to mind, you remember? So we looked hard, because we felt like we needed to present all sides of this. Covid happened. When did everybody start school when they were doing it remotely? We no longer had a commute. Why wouldn't you start school at 7:30 in the morning? There's no longer a commute. You look across the country, the high schools that were doing remote learning. And if they had a 7:30 start, they were starting at like 8:15, 8:30, and there was no longer even a bus commute. You look at what time college classes start for kids. College classes don't start at 7:30 in the morning. The earliest college class in most places that we we did our research and we looked, college classes are starting at 8:30. There's a few at eight, but most were 8:30. So there is I'm a firm believer that if we're starting from scratch, and that's the problem with a lot of things we do, we don't have the opportunity to just say, forget what we have and let's start new, you know, what do we want to do? But if we're creating a high school now, I don't think we would ever create the start of high school at 7:30. We would make the start of high school at at 8:30. So we haven't seen any negative impacts or heard impacts from the kids that they're being hurt in some way because we were later and now the rest of the world is earlier or, you know, and and as I told you, I'm, you know, I'm 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 a father who believes in a lot of tough love, and you know, you 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 just you get through that and you got to figure it out. But there is something to the fact that kids just have a time they go to bed. And that's why this makes such an impact for them.
And sir, I will say to you, to remember that if you haven't been steeped in the science of this, this is one of the common things that comes up from people who haven't really spent a lot of time evaluating the science. And one of those things is that, well, how will students be able to deal with earlier times in their post educational lives? This, like other hormonal changes, is time limited. This is a phase, this is this, the shift in the secretion of melatonin in their bodies that that is the driving force behind behind them needing to wake up later is time limited. It's an adolescent hormonal change. They're not adolescents forever. And typically, by the time they're out in the workforce, that melatonin has shifted back to its release and it's ebbing and flowing more similarly to what it was when they were younger. And it stays that way until actually towards the end of the life cycles. People get older, they do tend to need to their 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 melatonin secretion shift again. So by the time they're in their twenties or whatever and out of college, they've gone through adolescence and it shifts back. So this is a time limited phenomenon. They will be well prepared for the workforce. And actually, school code, we don't talk about this that much, but school code that was written actually called for schools to begin at 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. It's still on the books. Now, there is more flexibility in the state constitution and school code that allows schools to have more authority on when they start and end their school day. But if you look back at the school code that was written back in the 1800s and even didn't make the 1940s edit, the school day is still supposed to be nine to three. So when people say, I didn't get up at, you know, I well, actually, yeah, depending on grade, you probably did go to school a little bit more towards 8:30, 9 o'clock. And we just forget it as we get older and have been as the suburban sprawl and more and more students were moving out into the suburbs, and more and more buses were needed to transport students. From an economic point of view, we needed to do tiered systems, and some students had to go much earlier so that everybody didn't have their own individual bus route. And that's sort of what we've been accustomed to for decades. And now the science is telling us just like smoking, just like too much sun exposure, it's really unhealthy. The change that we've made for the sake of economics, and if we can do it, we should honor our students biology, because they have a lot at stake in terms of their physical and mental well being, and we owe it to them to support that in whatever way we can.
You could take your time for one more.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's for sure.
So the question is, how many of our children walk? I don't know that actual percentage off the top of my Well, nobody, we're we're right now with what we've changed. We don't have kids in the dark. So we Well, I'm sure, yeah, our 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 fields and our facilities are being used all through the night for youth programs and things like that. So yes, we do have, we have a downtown Wayne. Of those who live close to Wayne, Wayne, Radnor Township School District is 14 square miles. So we are very compact. We are very tight. There is a downtown Wayne, those homes that are close to Wayne, those kids could potentially walk. But it's, I I I I don't know, parents would know if I don't know how many, but we will, we 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 wind up busing and setting up transportation for all our kids, unless the kids are let us know that they're that close to the school that they'll be walking, and we wind up setting up transportation for most. So huge challenge. Huge. Yeah, so the the technical school, and we started those conferences. So the question is, is how does it look for the technical schools, the technical colleges? And the other question was, how about the the private school kids that we have to transport? Their technical high schools. So I thought I also heard private schools too. Okay. Lot bussing. So our our intermediate unit technical programs, that was a real challenge. So we started the conversation early with the intermediate unit. As we had different options, we continued to let them know what our options were, and we discussed with them each one of those options. What would this look like for our students? A lot of times, as it's worked in in Delaware County, I only know Delaware County, Chester County's technical programs. Sometimes the kids at certain schools go in the morning, some the kids go in the afternoon, some kids go full day. It all depends in our two in the the two counties I've worked in. We, the kids with the technical school in the morning still go early. So that was one of the things we wanted to get them that extra sleep. We were unable to do that, because that program starts at a certain time. So those kids still, and then we arranged for that busing to get those kids, just like we were busing them before, but we arranged that busing to get those kids there. The way the school district works with the technical programs, it's never perfect. Without school start time, I'll tell you as a former high school principal, that is always a challenge trying to figure out, depending what that student needs at the technical program, and what the student needs at the high school, what schedule is going to work best, depending on the the technical program, if they want one particular high school to be in the afternoon some years and not in the morning. So that's something that we had to problem solve and look at. The private school runs enormous challenge for us. We had at the time about 70 different private schools we bused to. You know, for all different sorts of programs, kids who don't attend Radnor, and that was a challenge for us figuring that out. Again, our transportation director and our dispatcher, unbelievable problem solvers. They finally sat down and realized, you know what? We're going to put our private school runs over here and keep them separate, look to where we can piggyback, and they work together with other districts for some of those private runs. And that's how then we developed the bus system as a separate private school system versus what is the system for Radnor. So now, so even so, our current, this whole process made us also identify and realize that, you know, our current busing system, when was the last time we did an audit of all of our transportation and really looked at, how could we improve our transportation routes and our runs? Every year, we develop the runs, and we've really thoughtful people doing it, but let's take the time to land the plane, really look at how we do runs, and are there efficiencies we can find? We found some of those efficiencies as well, and ways we could improve our transportation system, and then problem solve, how could we fit these different options, which I went through, which would then work for us? Does that make sense?
That was the last question, because we are going to let them go for the evening. So thank you so much, Dr. Bachelor and President Goldman. We appreciate your time this evening. Anyone else on the board, right?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. And if there's anything else we could do, I mean, in education, we all like to work together. So if there's anything we can do, whether it's our students, whether it's staff or former high school principals, administrator would would be happy to come back and share some of the details or working with our transportation director, we'd be happy to share. And I I wish you well with it. It's hard. It's these aren't easy things. I mean, I I felt like this was really hard, then covid happened. So now I can't look back and say, you know, we survived covid. This can't be that hard, now that we got through covid. But these are hard things, you know, for communities to 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 look at, and you have to find out what's right for your community. But we're 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 a community that as on the other end of it, as I can quote our one student, we're really glad we did it, and it's made a lot of sense. So thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us. Congratulations to all the new members and reelected board members. Welcome to your first meeting. Thank you for being patient and having us. They were all really good questions.
All right, we're going to move move on. So we did have a presentation this evening on All right, we're going to move, uh, move on. Um, so we did have a presentation this evening on, um, All right, are we all back? I think we're just waiting on Jimmy out. Here's Jimmy out.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we're back online, right?
Yep.
All right. Um, so I mentioned before, um, we lost the connection that the next presentation on school start and end times regarding after school extracurricular activities and athletics. We're actually going to move to next week. Um, and Jim's doing another presentation next week. So we're going to combine those two since we are running a little bit over. Um, so we're going to move now to first public comment period. And during the first public commentary, we hear um, comments on agenda items only. Uh, we hear a maximum of five speakers on any particular topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes and note that it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue. When approaching the podium, uh, please state your name, your municipality of residence and the topic upon which you are speaking. Um, all right, first speaker is Spencer Lewis.
All right, hello. Uh, so my name is Spencer Lewis. I am, uh, live within Whitpain. And uh, I'm the municipal chair of the Whitpain Township, uh, area, uh, Democrats within the Wissick and Dem- Dems. And I'm representing, uh, I'm here speaking on their behalf as neither co-chair was able to attend tonight. Daniel Duckett or Joyce Kelly. Um, it was a punch in the gut, uh, about a month ago. When we, when I got the call, uh, about Ian passing. And um, honestly, it still feels a bit off, you know, talking about, you know, these issue, these issues and uh, and such. But um, as normal, we met with Ian when he was, um, to uh, to endorse him, um, by the Wissick, uh, Wissick and Democrats. So as this meeting was uh, approaching, we felt um, the need to uh, abide by the Wissick and bylaws and endorse the candidate as we would normally do, as we did in the case with, with uh, with Ian. Um, and hear from candidates and uh, make sure that we provide an endorsement for uh, uh, you, a candidate that upholds the same ideals that Ian did. We met with, uh, we met last week as a group. And um, through that process, we endorsed um, a longtime member of this community educator, uh, Gene Golson, who's here tonight. Um, we're not trying to insert ourselves in this process. Um, you know, if we're not, if we're not welcome, but um, we just want to ask for an open and uh, democratic process um, to determine how this uh, vacancy will be filled. And um, you know, that's, that's all we're asking for and however it turns out, turns out. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Katie, is there anyone online?
Yes, we have a few hands. First up is Amanda Hunt.
Amanda, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Amanda Devera.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah. Okay, hi. Uh, okay, I'm Amanda Hunt. Um, I live in Whitpain Township and I'm a parent in the district as well as a school psychologist. Um, I was wondering if the district, um, I know there's been a lot of talk about the needs of adolescents with this time change. Um, but I was wondering if the district has considered or looked into some research on the needs of our elementary students? Uh, and just taking a look at the research that's available on their needs in relation to school.
Oh, you cut out Amanda. We can't hear you. Amanda, are you still there?
Hello. Sorry, I thought I lost you. Um, did you, were, were you hearing what I was saying?
Uh, we heard part of it about research regarding elementary students.
Right, right. Um, so I was looking into it on my own a little bit. And um, what I found was studies show that um, school start times at the elementary level, if, if school starts beyond nine AM, um, that proves to be detrimental to the learning of K to five students. Um, and also, um, what, what they're seeing in those studies is more behavioral issues within that age group in the afternoon as well. Um, so I was just curious to see if the district had uh, looked into that for elementary uh, start times. Because I know it looks like our start times are either proposed to be nine fifteen or nine twenty, if I'm correct. Um, with the elementary change and then pushing it to either three fifty-five or four o'clock. Um, so I was just uh, hoping to get that answer from the, from the board as far as um, have we looked into that, into those needs for our uh, elementaries? And also, um, I know a lot of our elementary students are also involved in sports and other activities. And just wondering about, you know, what time if they're getting home at, you know, if school's going to end at four, they get home at quarter to five or five o'clock, and then how does that work for them? And their needs in regards to after school activities, homework dinner, et cetera. So, um, so that was all.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks.
All right, our next in-person speaker is Michelle Chess.
Good evening. Um, the reason why I'm here is to ask the board to consider Jill Lafferty for the open board position. Excuse me, I'm on like week five of the twelve week off going right. So I apologize. Um, I walked last, the last meeting as speakers came to the podium and said that we need to pick a replacement for Mr. Berg, who shares his values. From Ian's profile on the Wiss Strunk page, it explains that his top priorities are to ensure that every student gets a quality education and have resources available that will prepare them for success after graduation. The second was to improve the physical infrastructure of the schools while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Jill has gone above and beyond, excuse me, for the last twenty years to make sure there are programs that enrich the kids' education available, including supporting the school-sponsored programs as well as creating events for, for further student proficiency in real life experiences in education. She's given countless hours of her time with no compensation, other than the appreciation she has received related to the happiness and enrichment she has brought to the school community, including that of students, teachers and administration. She has given tirelessly at the homework club to make sure the kids have the support and guidance that they need, especially those that may need a little extra help. I was just planning in the, for the career night with her last week to make sure our students learn about some of their options after their wish years that they might not otherwise consider. After that, we planned out details of how we were going to treat staff to some well-deserved treats to make sure they know how appreciated they really are. Jill is always at school, listening to the community and is actively aware of where improvement is needed within the facilities, based on what she sees and hears as she works in our buildings with the community each and every week as boots on the ground. I would challenge that she probably is more aware of areas needing improvement than many of the members currently seated on the board, because she is volunteering in the trenches with our students and staff. And that wasn't meant in a negative way at all to anybody here. Um, I know she will stop at nothing to advocate for a better environment within budget constraints to ensure that everyone has a safe, positive and updated environment in which to learn where all are equally represented as community members. Jill ran on a platform of advocating for the community, communicating with the community directly and welcoming face-to-face exploring of the issues currently within the schools and considering all viewpoints and any decisions. And to educate our community in a way that everyone benefits to the highest extent and have the greatest possible outcomes of success, striving for excellence. Uh, to echo what Taryn said earlier, asking about questions, parents should have access to the board and the experts and be able to ask questions. So to that, Marshall, I, I appreciate your, your sentiment greatly. Every school board member should have the same goal regardless of political affiliation. To contribute to the success of every student and prepare them for the future, in addition to ensuring the district is full of teachers who are the most qualified and feel appreciated and valued and like their opinions matter. I am sure if Mr. Bird was an ideal candidate for school board, that he likely shared many goals and values with Jill. So why Jill?
She has served. I'm so sorry, your time is up.
Can I have thirty seconds?
Um.
I'll go quickly, I'll be quick. Sorry, my throat is kind of like killing me. She's served many years at each of the HSA's, the elementary, middle and high school level, as well as serving on WEAF. She has also spent a lot of her time in the Homer Club to make it a success. I would challenge that any of the applicants who may be presented for consideration for the open position would likely ha- not have even comparable timetable of service directly to our community as Jill. And I'll skip the next section. In closing, you have an excellent candidate who's well-qualified, who wants to serve the community in the capacity of board member. Please select her to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
We have Kathy Sobasinski.
Kathy, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I'm a PSCA member. Actually, I retired from Radnor Township School District. Ken was my superintendent before I retired. And I wanted to add that Jill Lafferty, I wanted to echo what Ms. Michelle just said. But I also would like to um, note that Jill has been endorsed by the Whitpain Township Republican Committee to serve. And I would ask you as um, thinking individuals to select, please, the best person. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Kathy. Uh, next in person is Michelle, um, Melware. I'm sorry if I read the last name wrong.
Sorry, never enough for people. Um, hi, I'm Michelle Miller. I'm from Whitney Township. I want to share with you a text, um, response I had with an acquaintance the day after the election. Um, this acquaintance, she texted me because she didn't take my pamphlets at the, at the, at the poll. And uh, she said, hi, I didn't want to take your pamphlet yesterday. I usually vote straight Democrat. It's tough for Jewish people to affiliate with the antisemitism amongst the, the alternative right. Nothing personal. I know you're not alternative right, just speaking that, that everyone hates the Jews right now. I said, good morning. Uh, since you brought it up, the antisemitism is coming through the left right now, which is bothering my mind that Jews are still voting Democrat. And you all literally voted for a deceased man yesterday for the school board. Ian Berg passed away three weeks ago, but you were all being told, vote for the five. There weren't five, there were four. I used to be a Democrat. I can't believe people don't see they're being used as pawns. I walked away from being a pawn, uh, and went ever to freedom. That being said, we don't have to talk about this anymore unless you want to further discuss. She said, oh, okay, no problem. I'm open-minded enough to see others' views. Yes, extremes on both ends are not good and the pro-Palestine zip in my lip. What? I voted for a deceased person? She had no idea. You didn't, uh, so, so you didn't know you were voting for a deceased person? No. Uh, about voting for the deceased man, you'll have to fill me in when I see you next. I said, there's really nothing to tell you. The man passed away about three weeks ago. And yesterday, we're still telling everybody to vote for the five. That should be illegal. It's definitely immoral. I don't know how they're getting around the legalities. Uh, but meanwhile, uh, you must have missed the signs at our poll, polling location because there's really, uh, we are a crime and loving and diverse group. Dems want to distract people with national things when this is a very small local election. There's a lot of chatter and lies and propaganda and now deception of getting people to vote for a deceased candidate. Might be time for you to reevaluate or at least start cross-voting. That's what I did when I was a Democrat. I started cross-voting to keep parties in check and, and voting for the person, not the party. I'm sure had you known, you would have definitely voted for the woman who has given nineteen years of her heart and soul to the district through grade school, middle school and high school. She's been the president of the PTAs, the Home and School Association. She's run every ice cream social, graduation and everything else you can think of. She goes to Ambler and does homework with the less fortunate kids. She's amazing and everyone loves her. You would definitely have voted for her over the person who unfortunately is no longer on this earth. And honestly, if you look at the background of some of the others, you would be like, oh my God, this woman has way more experience. She says, oh, okay, I will definitely do more research. I am sure I would not want my memory or my family's memory associated with deception. We have a democratic process and they voted for Jill Lafferty, the candidate with the most qualifications and experience and in-person votes. She belongs up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Katie, who's connected in person speaker, in uh, online speaker?
We have no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, Liz Saffardi is next.
Hi, Liz Saffardi from Whitpain Township. Good evening and congratulations to Mr. Walker on his appointment. And congratulations as well to the current board members who won their reelection bids. A task that lies ahead now is the selection of a ninth board director, the process of which is being decided, I think, after this comment period. Um, as Mr. Saltanic mentioned at the previous board meeting, this will be a somewhat rare instance in which the board will approve an applicant who has not been duly elected within the context of extremely rare instance where an open seat was created by the very unfortunate passing of a board candidate. You now have a very unique opportunity to disentangle one segment of local governance from the conflict that is created by partisan elections and hear direct feedback from the stakeholders in the community to make a selection that will render you an exceptionally qualified person. I am here to express my family's support for one such individual. She has spent two decades now fostering relationships within Wissick Hicken, an active leadership and volunteership role since two thousand and five. She has served as the president of the Home and School Association for Shady Grove Elementary School. She has served as the president of the Home and School Association for Wissick Hicken Middle School. She served as both a board member and a volunteer of WEAF, Wissick Hicken Educational Opportunities Foundation for twelve years, two of which she served as its president. On our district website, WEAF is described as, quote, "an essential partner to the Wissick Hicken School District," end quote. Since it was founded, WEAF has provided more than five hundred thousand dollars to enrich teaching and learning at WIS. She's going into her tenth year in service of the Home and School Association at Wissick Hicken High School as the current president. Person who I've been speaking of this evening is Mrs. Jill Lafferty of Bluebell. Mrs. Lafferty has cultivated many relationships and developed a strong rapport with teachers, staff and families that would serve to provide intimate insight and numerous diverse perspectives to this board. It's safe to assume that she would serve and is an informal human bridge between the board, the community and the schools. Mrs. Lafferty would make a wonderful asset to this board, I believe, and so does my family. And while I'm quite sure that there are other applicants within our community who would serve us very well, you will be hard-pressed to find someone with such a full and rich history of service to our community that Mrs. Lafferty has. And I wish you each the best of luck in making your decision and a productive and fruitful year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone online? Okay, who's next online?
We have Heather Maltin.
Okay, Heather, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, my name's Heather Malt and I'd also like to support Jill Lafferty to fill the vacancy of Mr. Berg. I've been a resident of Gwinnett Valley for twenty-four years. Um, I'm a parent of two WIS graduates. I have a son presently in the school as a junior. Um, I'm the supervisor of the Rising Stars Homework Club and an active volunteer at Matty Dixon for the past twenty-five years. Um, I've seen Jill, I've worked alongside with her for years in uh, the capacity in the schools as a friend and watched her just roll up her sleeves and get in the trenches and do the work. I really feel that the school board should not be selected. I really feel that the school board should not be selected by party. I think Jill, regardless, Democrat, Republican, is one of those people that has a track record of making the time to look into things, to talk to people, and to find out what they need. And I feel that she's tried, she's run, and she wants to serve the community. She'll do what's best for our kids and our future, and I think we should give Jill a chance. And that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
We have Sharon O'Donnell from Ambler. Are you doing second comment period or not commenting? Alright, Dr. Robert Kelly.
About two hours past my bedtime, so I'm slightly sleep deprived. I am in the OR every day around four thirty. My name is Dr. Robert Kelly. I'm a clinical professor in medicine at the Lewis Katz School of Medicine at Temple University. I'm a Harvard Medical School graduate. Most importantly, out of all my accolades, I'm a dad with three kids in the Wissahickin School District. Um, in my clinical practice, I not only research the effects of sleep deprivation, but actively educate my patients on the correlation of healthy sleep hygiene, adequacy practices, and the optimization thereof of health. So I commend the school district on the endeavors that you're taking, looking into this for the wellness of our kids. Um, I looked at the litany of presented facts, have formulated based on the data. Um, and I think surveys are good because it provides objective data that school time should not change. One could argue that we are essentially preparing these young adults early in life for the future. The future in many cases will include a college professor, a leading military officer, a corporate boss that won't allow their students, troops, or employees to just roll into work or school an hour late. So I'm going to go on my Shark Tank sales pitch here. For zero dollars, we can do something with less logistical hassle. Instead of so much focus on late school start times, the district should take a stance on the wide reduction or the elimination of homework. Those guys will smile over there. Okay, its effects on student wellbeings. Now, as a medical educator, I teach medical residents fellow students down at Temple. And one thing we learned after COVID is we needed to make the wellness and the well-being of our residents who were on the front lines of COVID better. And what did we reduce after work? Our study. Okay, we let them free their minds. We let them go home, let them ride their bikes, we let them exercise. Okay, it's proved to be dramatic. Okay, so I think we have considered, we can consider earlier, less reduced homework, we can get earlier bedtimes. And I think Radnor is pointing to that. Let's not put the cart before the horse. Let's look at this topic in in essence. We will gain a precious hour back of sleep that is in question here. What have you noticed from those students up there in the videos that they showed? They're going to bed at around 1:00 AM. Why are they going to bed at 1:00 AM? These guys will tell you, too much homework. All right, so let's look at what they've done in Finland and in various school districts across the United States. It's proven to be beneficial for sleep hygiene perspective, less homework, or the elimination of homework. So I implore the district to look at this. It could be a much much simpler adjustment to the district without as much expense and logistical hassle. So in closing, for most children, mandatory homework assignments push their work week far beyond the school day and deep into what any other laborers would consider overtime. Even with sports, music, and other school-sponsored extracurriculars, the daily homework slog keeps many students on the clock as long as lawyers, medical residents, teachers, truck drivers, and overworked adults. Give me two more seconds. Is it any wonder that deprived of the labor protections that we have for for adults, our kids are suffering from an epidemic of sleep deprivation, disengagement, anxiety, and depression? And that's all I have, so I think we should consider that. Thank you very much. And I will offer my email as a as a local expert to you guys. If you want to write my email down, it's D R Kelly, K E L L Y, one at gmail dot com. And I'm happy to provide my expertise as a sleep expert. Um, I know that you had sleep experts here as well. Um, I read all the reviews. It's taken me about a year and a half or what have you to get out of my shell to come here because I have to be at the hospital at 3:00 AM tomorrow, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie, anyone online?
No more hands raised on Zoom.
Alright, we have one more in person, Ron Stoloff.
My name is Ron Stoloff. I live in Whitpain. And members of the board probably know me because I'm here at a um, a bad sore in the toe. I'm here to remind you again uh, that change is hard, but sometimes change is necessary. The people who were sworn in today and everyone who has been sworn on to the board since the board was created always had the obligation to do the best they could do to support our students. True, any change will inconvenience people, whether it be the teachers, the the bus drivers, the parents, uh, the employers of our students. But the the major concern of ours, uh, board and our school district should be our students. Starting school at the abominable hour that the school starts for high school students in in the face of all the research that shows you that is the worst possible thing we can do to our students, not for them. We're doing it to them. We're hurting them every single day. And I call on the board once again to do the right thing. Do the right thing for our students. Our students will be better off and so will our community. Preparing our students for a uh, changes when they're adults by making them go through hell now is not going to do them any good, as has been pointed out earlier. No college course that I am aware of starts before eight thirty. Yet we expect our high school students, when their circadian rhythm tells them you should be asleep at seven thirty, are now sitting in the in a classroom. It's totally wrong pedagogically. And every scientific study that I have seen in years of research, in spite of what others may have claimed, shows that this is the worst thing we can do to our kids. We must change the schedule. It's going to be uncomfortable. But as the guy from Radnor said, nobody is talking about going back to the way it used to be because everybody knows it's better with a later start time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. And Katie, no one's online now. Okay, so we'll move past our first public comment period. Alright, moving on to board president report. So the first thing under my report is the school director vacancy. Um, so as Mr. Saltanic discussed with us at our last meeting, um, and unfortunately, Steve, you weren't here for that meeting, but we do have a couple options available to us, two options. We can either go through a process where you appoint a former board member, or we can have a more open process where you invite applications, which we've done the last two vacancies at least. Um, so my proposal is going to be that we, um, you know, we can certainly have discussion, but I'm just going to make a proposal that we have an open process that we, um, have applications submitted by tomorrow, uh, excuse me, not applications, uh, a a notice go out tomorrow. Sorry, it's getting late, I'm getting tired. A notice go out tomorrow. Um, asking for applications to be submitted by, let's say, Thursday, would that work for you, Katie? Could you get get them all together, get them to the board by Friday so that we can go through them? Um, I would suggest ranking, everybody rank their top five. And then, um, I'll go through the list. You send me your top five. I'll compile the top five, email them, and those individuals have to be able to come Monday evening uh, for the meeting, and we'll do interviews at that time. That would be my proposal. Now, are there any comments or other suggestions for how we could do it?
Yeah, Amy, I would just like to, um, and this is maybe for Katie, is that when we when we put out the public notice soliciting uh, people who are interested in applying for the board vacancy, that we make clear that, um, part of the process to put your name forward is to make sure that you're also available for the board's um, scheduled meeting on Monday, December eleventh, starting at seven o'clock. Ideally, we'd be able to bring, you know, the top five candidates based on board input of those who applied to come to our public meeting next Monday so that we can go through, uh, public, um, questions and answers with the candidates. Um, in terms of like the public school code, school districts in Pennsylvania are given pretty wide latitude in how we essentially appoint someone to a vacant board seat. It basically boils down to a majority vote of the sitting board members, so at least five out of the eight board members who are are sworn in. Um, but in terms of process, again, there's wide latitude. But I I agree with Amy. I think similar to what we've done the past few times that we've had board vacancies, um, soliciting, um, interest from people in the community is a good thing just to open it up for anyone who wants to make a case. And then we have a public discussion with the different candidates, and then we'll have a public vote and hopefully come to a consensus on a candidate to fill the seat. We have thirty calendar days from when the vacancy is officially recognized, which is today. Um, and if we don't come up with a candidate with majority support from the board, then a judge will stick someone in the space for us, which none of us want to happen. So I think we're all motivated to do this process quickly. And again, I support having an open an open solicitation of people who are interested.
Any other comments regarding the process?
I would also support the open and transparent process that is recommended. Uh, my question is, given the relatively short timing we have to, uh, to do this process, is there a way to get a message out to the broader community beyond just what we might be able to email out to our families so that we can have, um, the greatest amount of interest for anyone who may be interested, but not necessarily a part of the school community right now?
Katie, what means do we have? We have social media. What else? What can we do?
Um, all of our district channels would be email and social media, um, our website as well, but we can explore.
Could we explore maybe putting an ad in the paper?
What's the deadline for that, Katie?
Like in the Ambler?
Yeah, but I I think that's that's what we do, I think it's viable. I just want to make sure of the timing of that.
Oh, yeah.
If we do it first thing tomorrow morning, I think it'll hit on Wednesday or Thursday. So theoretically, it either may or may not be useful.
Are there any other online, um, papers that would that post on a regular basis, like on their websites or their Facebook page that we know of in the area that we could post on, like community type pages?
Um, I would like to talk to our communications department to see what the mailing list would look like and see what channels we can explore.
Yeah, that would be great, Katie. Thank you.
So I know Am, the Ambler paper also does a digital, um, distribution, and it goes out quite frequently. And at times, I've gotten things that were kind of advertisements from them. So if that's a, uh, opportunity that can be explored just to kind of ensure that we have given ample public notice.
Are you looking into all that tomorrow, Katie? Thank you. Alright, so we'll get that up tomorrow.
Hey, Amy.
Yeah.
I did want to just mention that Jeff had said we could elect a past or appoint a past board member. And I would say that, um, you know, I'm fine with the open process if that's what we want to do, if that's what the majority wants to do. But, you know, this this job takes a long time to learn. There's a lot to learn. And so this is a two-year appointment. We just had an election where people had the opportunity to run and be elected. So I feel like having either Ronnie or Dave, if either of them would be willing to serve just for the two more years to hold over to the next election, where then again, people have the opportunity to run, um, and vote for people. I think that would be, that would serve us well because it would save a lot of time. This is very rushed. You know, like we said, we're not sure. We can get it out to a greater community because there's not a lot of time. Um, for continuity, we know the kind of people that Dave and Ronnie are. I feel like they would honor Ian Berg's memory and the people that, the person that the people did elect to the seat. So that's another option, I guess.
Thank you, Dan. And I will note, um, I did have the opportunity to speak to Ronnie and David about this. Uh, Ronnie was not interested in continuing on. David, if the board would be interested, would be interested in continuing on in his position. Um, so that's certainly an option available to the board as well. Um, if you do not want to proceed with an open process, it's certainly open for discussion. That was just my recommendation to move ahead with an an open process. Are there any other comments regarding the process?
Yeah, Amy, uh, I'm a product of the open process. There was an open position. I threw my hat and the ring to the board. I was the one selected. Uh, I know at least one other board member, um, uh, got onto the board the same way. I was then elected to a four-year term, as was, uh, the other board member. Um, and so I think that if you give everybody an opportunity who wants to throw their hat in the ring, who wants to be a part of it, I think is the most appropriate process. Um, I have no experience as a board member, like every other elected physician, you don't have experience until you get that position. And I think that anybody can, uh, show their interests, their ability, and their capability, uh, by simply applying, uh, coming before us, answering our questions, where we can make a decision. Uh, and I think that's, uh, you want to talk about honoring somebody's legacy, uh, doing it in an appropriate way that allows everybody an opportunity, and I think that is the best.
And I would have, I met Ian through an open process. Ian and I were both part of the open process when Paul was chosen, and that's when Ian and I first became friends. So I think, yes, Ian, I think would agree. Alright, any other comments?
Yeah, I I think we should put it to a road. I I think, uh, I think both are viable options, but, um, but I do think I I'm I'm for an open process. I I think that's the right thing to do.
I don't know, Michelle. Can we technically vote? This isn't a vote.
Oh, do we vote on it or like, how does it work?
It's a consensus.
Oh, consensus. Okay, so do we have consensus?
I feel like we do. It seems like we have consensus for the process. Okay, so again, to repeat it, Katie, tomorrow, we're going to advertise. Thursday, by close of business, you're going to have resume and cover letters describing interest. Friday, you'll send it to all of us. By end of business Friday, everybody will, I guess, it's best you come on Friday. I know everybody works. So whenever you can get to me on Friday, your top five, and then I'll email the applicants for Monday. That works for everyone?
Yeah, and Amy, one is one just detail to add is that in the public notice that goes out, again, making any candidates also, uh, ensuring that they're also available for, uh, the Monday night meeting on December eleventh. So if they are, you know, on the shortlist to come back, that they they can actually attend the meeting to, uh, answer questions. That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Alright, alright, so that resolves that. Alright, moving on, um, we're next discussing the appointment process for North Monco. So we have to replace Ronnie, right? Okay, does anyone have interest in this?
Well, I I can sell it for one minute.
Yeah, give us the pitch.
So, you know, Wissahickin is probably the district that has the least amount of people, of students who go to the community college that community high school, technical high school. But it is such an important component of what we offer to our students. It has been eye opening for me to see all the wonderful things and options we can provide our high school students. And they provide dinner for you, that our students prepare for us, for us, for the school board. And they're usually super quick, and half of them are Zoom. So on the Zoom days, you don't get a meal, but um, they're really, uh, it's really nice, and you get a chance to meet other school directors within, um, North Monco that you can kind of compare notes with and kind of see how they're doing things. So I think it's a, it's a really nice opportunity.
Steve, you have the main charge.
A great first meeting.
Um, alright, do we have to make an appointment? Okay, it'd be helpful, yes, if we had somebody volunteer this evening. Alright, and Zepi, right, a lot of these these meetings are virtual. You do get free food occasionally. Actually, you get free food at every person meeting.
Yeah.
So that's a huge, Steve, we were commenting on the food earlier. They're quick meetings, Michelle, Stan?
I'm getting it from both sides.
I nominate Steve Walker.
I second that.
I I'm stuck.
You've just been voluntarily told.
It's an act. All right, Steve, actually, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. So actually, we are going to vote on this tonight. So Steve, you can change your mind. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments regarding Steve's nomination?
Yeah. Are you really? Like, did we really even?
Oh, you guys totally railroaded me. Does this mean I get to be on one less committee?
Sure.
Sure.
Sure. We'll give him like audit committee that meets once a year.
Okay.
And policy.
And policy. No, you don't want.
All right. No comments or questions. All right. And Steve, you seriously are okay with that, right?
I am seriously okay with it.
All right. Then if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Yeah, according to Jim, we are voting.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed? All right. Congratulations, Steve. Big night for you. All right. Now we'll move on to our superintendent report. Jim? Oh, the resolution. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. So this is the resolution and we're voting on this next week. This is just reviewing it and this is to support. I think we've talked about this before, possibly the last meeting, or I know it's at least been circulated. The Republican representative from Westmoreland, Jill Cooper, has legislation she's proposing to push school start times in the state of Pennsylvania back. And you can take a look at the resolution, but basically we would just be voting to put forth this resolution to support her legislation to push school start times. And that would be across the state, not just here in Wissahickin, but a movement across the state for that. So we'll vote on that next week, but you can take a look at that resolution. And, you know, we can have further, we can discuss it now or have further discussion on it next.
I don't want to discuss it right now, but was this written by us or did we lift this from somewhere else and we, we were using someone else's language?
Jeff, I believe, wrote it.
We, we wrote it? Oh, Jeff did? So do we have liberty to kind of fine tune some of the wording? Because, you know, I'm an into words. Okay.
Yeah, just like let us know the proposed changes before.
Will do.
Amy, I have a quick question.
Yes.
And the resolution talks about support for this other resolution. With my understanding, that hasn't been brought forward yet.
Right now she's just looking for support for her proposed legislation.
Is the, is the resolution itself, because what, what I read, I thought was that the representative is preparing a resolution.
That was an old memo and the House, the bill is in the Education Committee right now, but it has to move out of committee to be voted on. So that's where it is right now.
Then I think we need to see that in order to vote to support it.
You, you want to see the bill that's in committee right now? I'll send it to you.
If that's what we're voting to support, I don't know how we could vote to support something if we never see it.
Does it link to it? It shouldn't.
Yeah, there's a link to it at the bottom.
Good link to it.
It doesn't, because I, again, I, I saw just the article that said, and maybe I just missed it, but I saw an article that said, planning on introducing.
There it is.
Yes.
Is the full resolution there?
Yeah, it'll link to it. So take a look at it.
Perfect. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure of before we.
Yeah.
Click on the link.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Move on to superintendent report.
I have just one quick item. We, as you recall, we have a health and safety plan that is still required reviewed every six months. This came from the grants that were associated with the pandemic. We last reviewed ours on June fifth, made some changes at that point. We don't have any changes to that version now, so we don't have to take any action now, but I just wanted to bring everyone's attention that it's being reviewed six months. And we'll probably have to do this again in another six months.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Assistant Superintendent Report?
Oh, I had a quick question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Jim, is there any way we can investigate if Esser can like let go of this regulation since it's not like, this has become now like another piece of paper that we're just kind of like pushing along? If it's not really being, you know, a real thing anymore, why are we still like doing it? Is, is there any kind of effort to talk to Esser to see if like, are they going to let go of this requirement? Like this can't be like another thing that just stays on the books for the next ten years. This, this is just like redundancy.
Right. It's a good point. I should have pointed out that the Esser grants all officially expire as of September twenty-four. So there will be one more review and then we'll be done.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Devon?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. I have one informational item. I'm delighted to share that in the afternoon on November twentieth, our Director of Equity and Cultural responsiveness, Ms. Latour, and our restorative practices instructional coach, Mr. Mandell, provided an introductory training on restorative practices to over two hundred support staff members. As you know, we have been rolling out restorative practices training for our professional staff, so we were very pleased to be able to offer this opportunity for our support staff. This is an important training and training, right along with the other trainings we've had for our support staff to explore and understand restorative practices. They were able to explore problems of practice. They clarified behavior responses within a tiered framework, as we've been talking about, a multi-tiered systems of support. Those tiered responses to behaviors is a part of that. It also provided some intentional time for connection among our support staff members, which is always important and wonderful. Next step for our support staff will be reinforcing these practices and supporting their application. So we want to say special thanks to Ms. Latour and Mr. Mandell. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on now to the board solicitor report. Michelle?
There's no informational items or action items. All right. Well, thank you. Board Secretary Report, Wade?
Yeah, thank you very much. We have five meeting minutes that are presented tonight and we'll be requesting approval at the next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Wade. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Board Treasurer Report?
Thank you very much. We will be presenting the treasurer's report for October at the next meeting for approval. Thank you.
Comments or questions? All right. Thanks again. Danielle, what's our report?
All right. Good evening. For your views tonight, our seven items under section fourteen of the Human Resources Report. The first three action items include resignations, appointments, a change of status, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes and postseason pay, and volunteer substitute additions. Item four is our request to hire a school psychologist. Item five is an MOU with RSVP. It's a volunteer organization that provides volunteers with a focus on literacy in grades K through five. And then fourteen point six is for a conference request and fourteen point seven is for the approval of the substitute guest teacher list. And that concludes my report this evening.
Great. Thanks, Danielle. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, one question about the additional school psychologist position.
Yeah.
Danielle, is this due to, I guess, a larger than expected workload and looks like evaluations and other psychologists responsibilities that we didn't anticipate in the last, last year's budget planning cycle?
Yeah, absolutely.
And is, is the increase in evaluations like, like a short term, like rise or increase?
It's a continuing need. That's why we'll need another school psychologist for now and into the future.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Actually, I had a question similar to Joe's, and that is, is there like, for a pop, like a certain population of special education, is there some sort of mandate about how many psychologists you have to have on board? Or is this just something we see the need to have?
I'd be happy to respond to that. The answer to that is no. However, in terms of special education law, there are regulations around timelines for completing evaluations. And so there's where we, we need to build some capacity around, around our certain kind of services with our psychologists.
So we've definitely had an increase in special education evaluations and services and student population in our district, as well as an overall increase. So my next question would be, do we need more special education support staff?
Thank you for the question. One of the things that we'll see moving into the budget season is our Director of Student Services will be providing that look ahead. We've been having some conversations and analyzing our data, data trends around the growth in our special education population for that very reason. And so as we move into budget season very soon. We'll have, as a part of the Department of Student Services, when they do the presentation that they do annually, Dr. Heimle Kleski will be walking us through what are the needs, what are the anticipated needs as we look ahead?
And I, I just wanted a little bit more context around RSVP and that program. I couldn't really make it out from the document.
Sure. So I got a little snippet I have here. The volunteer reading coaches work with students as directed by the teacher and the reading specialist. After assessments are completed, the volunteers are there to support classroom teacher literacy needs, working with students who are struggling with reading and writing. So it's a volunteer organization that provides the volunteers who are, who are trained by the organization, this RSVP, specifically in reading and writing. And they, and they target K through five.
Excellent. So this is an additional resource that we're kind of adding in for reading resources for K to five.
Correct.
And did I read that correctly? This is like completely a volunteer thing?
Absolutely.
That's great. Good to find, guys. Thank you.
Hey, one minor point about RSVP. The acronym doesn't match what the title of the, of the company is. RSVP, Responding to Community Needs Through Volunteerism. So anyway. Doesn't really mean anything. I just, it just jumped out at me. It sounds like a great program. And it's, it's great that it's, it doesn't appear to be any cost to the district, which is good.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our committee reports. Communications Committee, Zepi?
I have no items to report today.
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology, Dr. DeLong, can you take this?
Yes, thank you. I have two informational items and then a few action items that we'll review tonight for vote next week. Our first informational item is a recap of the Board Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting on November twentieth. At that meeting, we shared several topics, one of which was a brief overview of the multi-tiered systems of support, which is a framework for supporting students' academic, behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health needs. The committee discussed that this will be a multi-year implementation process across K-12. The committee also discussed the pending program changes to the high school gifted program. The district received a great deal of feedback at the community conversation on Monday, November, November twenty-seven, which resulted in the plan shifting to preserve the enrichment ELA and social studies course while also seeking to expand enrichment support to students in other content areas such as math and science. Our high school administration will continue to collaborate with our high school staff to explore the possible ways that we can expand to ensure all of our enrichment student needs are met. There are no additional updates on this topic at this time, but I did want to provide that follow-up update since the meeting on November twentieth. The committee also on November twentieth discussed the upcoming changes to special education program locations. Transition plans are going to include ongoing communication with families who will be impacted, as well as parent information meetings and student transition activities in the spring. A comprehensive, and I mentioned this earlier, that there's going to be a comprehensive review of anticipated future special education programming needs that will be presented to the board by our Director of Student Services at an upcoming finance committee meeting as part of the budget process. On November twentieth, the committee also discussed the process for reviewing the K-12 guidance plan, which will be submitted for board approval in the spring of 2024. We also discussed the new and revised curricula in science and technology education, as well as the high school program of studies for next year, which I will review in a moment. Lastly, the committee discussed the multi-year rollout of the elementary laptop replacement plan. And the committee reviewed the federal and state program expenditures for the current school year, as well as looking ahead to next school year. Are there any board questions or comments before I move on to the next informational item? Okay, hearing none. The next informational item is something that we do each year. We share updates on any changes to the high school program of study. In January, our students will begin their course selection process for next school year, and the program of studies guides that process. You'll see highlighted changes presented in the public content of board docs for informational item sixteen point two. Changes at the Wissahickin High School include the addition of new courses to replace some of our previous courses. Those new courses include computer science, cybersecurity, animation, video production, and broadcast production. A new course is also being added to the North Monco Technical Career Center programs, which includes sports rehabilitation and physical therapy and the Health and Human Services cluster. Before I move on to our review, our action items, are there any questions or comments from the board on this informational item?
Yeah, I, just a comment, the link to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five program of studies is not working.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll, we'll make sure to look into that and correct it.
Thank you.
And I have a question. Of North Monco, and I'm not sure if you know this or not, but the Pennsylvania Youth Apprenticeship Program, wasn't that the program where they could actually go out and work in like real life? Positions?
Yeah, I was going to say, I actually don't have that information readily available, but I can certainly look into that and follow up with the board.
Okay. Yeah, I just wondered like why they would drop if that's the program. I thought they had a program like that though.
I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And really quickly, it looks like a lot of the computer science programs that are coming in are replacing ones that are no longer offered. There's one class no longer offered, research methodology. I don't see anything to.
Yes, thank you for that question. So that one, so you're correct. The other courses are really replacing some of the previous courses, with the exception of that one re, research methodology. And exploring the rationale for that. That class has actually not run since the seventeen eighteen school year due to low request numbers for the course. And so when we see that over so many years, then the high school team, working with our Department of Teaching and Learning and Curriculum, will make that decision to cut the course.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Okay, now I'll move on to reviewing the action items, which we'll seek approval for from the board next week. Item sixteen point three is for professional development services with Bartell and Bartell for leadership training for our admin team and coaching sessions for our new administrators. Item number four, we'll seek approval to renew CrowdStrike, which is our cybersecurity software. Item number five, we'll seek approval of outplay services and tuition costs for three students as presented in the chart in board docs. And that concludes our report. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just one question. I love that there's going to be some input into training and communication. I'm not familiar with Bartell and Bartell. Or have we worked with them in the past? Is this like, I, I just quickly looked at their website. I, like, is this a core competency? How do we get to pick them?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So we have had prior trainings with Bartell and Bartell with our administrative team. And there, we've gotten tremendous feedback from our leaders around helping to develop their leadership skills, communication skills, opening lines of communication with staff and how that trickles down in terms of our, our leadership development as leaders, just as with our educators. We need to always be developing and learning and continuing to grow. And so this is the one way that we can continue to provide that support. So we did have a training in the summer and then last December as well. And so, yeah, we've gotten lots of good feedback and we're hoping to be able to continue with upcoming trainings as well. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for that report. All right, Facilities and Transportation, Joe?
Thanks, Amy. No informational items this evening, and we have one item that's up for vote next week, and it has to do with natural gas purchasing. And Wade, can you give us a summary of this action item, please?
Yeah. So we purchase a certain amount of natural gas and this will allow us to work with a consultant who will tell us when the right time to lock the price in is, and it will be for that period of time. And actually, the market right now is pretty decent. So upon, next, hopefully Monday, if the board gives us approval for this motion and the market stays competitive, we're likely to lock in quite a bit of it at that point in time.
Thanks. Any questions? All right. That's it for the facilities report tonight.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Fine, yes, committee. Wade, can you take that?
Thank you. So we have several items and some of them are recurring, like the first one, which is the approval of the financial reports for the month ended October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The second and then third items are related to the audit. We're having an audit committee meeting at six P M. next week. And we will have the auditor present the results of the audit. They have, again, been very, very favorable and so that's really number two. And number three is based on the audit. There are certain audit adjustments throughout the year that need to be done in order to comply with the audit. Item number four is the same, that we will be committing the fund balance as the numbers show there. We do this every single year. We actually in the May-June timeframe tell the board essentially, hey, this is how we're likely to commit the fund balance. And then this motion actually does commit the fund balance. and then this motion actually does commit the fund balance after the audit, or sort of as part of the audit, it becomes part of the audit. The next items, the next item is one that we also do pretty much every year. The Act One Index is 5.3%. This motion would lock the board into a tax increase from 0 to 5.3%. Because the Act One Index is fairly high historically, it is my recommendation to proceed with this motion. And again, there'll be any tax increase from 0 to 5.3%. That's the positive, and the other positive is that it allows us to develop the budget on a more appropriate timeframe, as opposed to trying to, if we don't do this, it has to be developed in a timeframe that makes it less detailed. So that's what this motion is.
Quick question, Wade. 5.1 or 5.3?
It's 5.3. Sorry, there was a revision from what the, I think I was still on. There was a revision from what the board material was, and I did change it to 5.3. Thank you. And the public has the 5.3 number as well.
Hey Wade, Wade, just a comment on 18.5. So for board members that have been on the board for several years now, you guys will recall that every year when we put the budget together, per Act One, that's state law, we're limited in terms of like a maximum tax increase that we can do in any given year, but there's also an option to request exceptions to go above that Act One limit. And in essence, this resolution, if approved, would say that we are not going to take any exceptions, and any budget increase that we put forth for next year, if any, will be no higher than the Act One Index. In the, in previous years, when I was first on the board in the, around 2015, 2018, around those years, it was more common for the board to consider taking exceptions to go above the Act One Index to provide enough resources and budget for what we expect in the coming years. But as Wade said, the Act One Index for next year for our school district is projected to be 5.3, which is pretty high. And I think it's more than reasonable for us to commit and bind ourselves to not doing any increases, or seeking any exceptions above that limit as we go into next year's budget cycle. And also, the side benefit, as Wade mentioned, is that if we adopt this as a board, then there's a streamlined budget development process that we go through. If we were going to leave open the possibility of exceptions, then it's a more involved process for us to develop next year's budget.
Thank you. The next item is, the next series of items are settlement agreements. We've spoken publicly about the fact that there, again, continue to be many folk who aren't going back to work in their offices. We are very lucky that we have a lot of office, in offices in our school district, which helps with taxes. But in this instance, because the occupancies are lower, the properties are less valuable, and pretty much across the board, we are going to be fighting on an individual basis all of these items. So we're bringing forward four bad guys, one good guy, so we're happy. We do fight on the positive side as well. So when we have information that shows us that we have an ability to go and do exactly what the other side is doing, if there's data that supports an increase, we go with that information as well. So it's four that are decreasing, one that is increasing, one has a fairly significant refund that is associated with it, but all of these have been supported by professionals in discussions with lawyers, and in some cases, appraisals. And the board in the past has again given us the ability to hire appraise, appraisal companies to support these as best we can. And these are based on professional opinions and appraisals, that this is the best we're going to be able to do. The last item is very common, and that's our spring sports, and that is 17,241 to support our purchases of various materials for the spring sports season.
So I have a question on the settlements. I didn't do the math, but where are we netting out? Like, what's the?
I'll do a chart for you.
Yeah, if we could do that at the next finance.
The chart will probably only depress you, but it is going to be a continuing depression.
I know, but, and this is just, like, how do we reflect it? I guess this is more of a finance question, so maybe I should hold different then, but like, like some of this was for past years, so how do we even kind of reflect this? So maybe give us like the lowdown at the next finance meeting, because it was troubling to see off.
That part is easy.
Okay.
We set up an accrual for that which may happen. So this, when we have to issue a refund, it actually doesn't impact our financials. So we're good. For the future, a reduction in the assessed value just decreases taxes, so that's the bad guy. So I'll give you a chart, which will say, you know, the assessment used to be this, now it is this, and we will receive less taxes in total of this, based on these, you know, four, offset by one properties.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll move on. Next, we have Policy Committee report, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. I have no informational items and no actions.
All right, thank you. Equity Oversight Committee, Paul?
Thanks, Amy. I will be brief. On November 20th, the REAC Committee had a community meeting, which it was termed Community Conversations. The purpose of the meeting was to invite the public in to hear about current efforts that the school district is undertaking through this committee, and more generally, for belonging and equity within the, within the district. The format of the meeting was six small group breakout sessions, and there were several major topics that were discussed, which included belongingness, racial disparity and discipline, equitable representation in AP classes and gifted programs, special education identification, and teacher-staff diversity. The format was terrific, because it allowed for a lot of communications back and forth, give and take between all the stakeholders that attended. So it included board members, it included administrators, faculty, students, both current and past students. And I was able to facilitate one of the small groups, but got a chance to talk to a number of the people who attended. It was overwhelmingly received very well. We got a lot of positive feedback, and it's one of several that we're going to do that will again include the broader community in our REAC conversations. Dr. Dewan, did you want to add anything to that?
No, you covered it. I do want to say thank you to our Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee, the members who attended, and our District Equity Planning Committee, because we had some of those members who attended as well. And of course, thank you to all of our community members who participated in those listening circles, and special thanks to Ms. Latour, who led and facilitated and coordinated that opportunity. So you did a great job, I just want to get in there with a special thanks to everyone.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I echo those comments for sure. A lot of work was put into this, and it showed. I thought the response was terrific, and so thanks to all who participated and who organized it.
Just to add on that, Paul, I feel like I went to this, and it was so eye-opening. I was in a circle with a former high school, a former Wissahickin High School student, and then a father of a biracial, two biracial children in the district. And just hearing their experiences, it's just so eye-opening, and you just have a truer sense of empathy, I think, for people when you can hear firsthand from them. And I just, I would love to see some sort of effort so that a greater, greater members of the community can hear these experiences, whether it be anonymous, or I don't know how we would do this, but I just think it's so important for people to hear from real students and parents in our district to understand what they face on a daily basis, what kind of, you know, discrimination, or what kind of bias they face. And it's just, like I said, I just think it's so important for people to hear. So I hope there's something we can do, other than just with the people that attend these meetings, which was a smaller group this time, because it was the night of the Eagles game. But I think, you know, if we can get that out to a wider audience, I just think it would be so beneficial for everyone to hear. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Paul. All right, now we're at Board, reported board representative, extracurricular? Oh, did I miss something? Oh my goodness, I scrolled down too far, sorry. Health, wellness, and safety.
Thank you, Amy. No informational items, no action items, and the next meeting will be January 16.
Sorry about that. All right, thank you so much. All right, now reported Board Representatives, Marshall, extracurricular.
Yeah, I have nothing for this evening, thank you.
Nothing, okay. I'm going to save my MCIA report for next week, since it's getting late.
I'm Rick Mako. We met a couple of weeks ago. We discussed some personnel issues in executive session, and we went over details of their new contract. They, we did pass a new contract for all North Monaco technical community. I'm always getting this wrong, but, NMTCC, whatever, for their new contract for their teachers. The next meeting is December 18th, which includes dinner. It's their holiday dinner. I will send you the details. But every, all board members are invited to that. I think you have to RSVP this week. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, PSBA, Lee, you have one?
Just a couple of quick things. Number one is there is a bill in the Senate HB 1422, which deals with charter school funding. It ensures greater accountability, increases transparency, and sets fairer payments to cyber charter schools while maintaining school choices for public education. So I'll send an email to all the board about that one, just so they're, PSBA is encouraging us to reach out to our representative in favor of that. The other one is, we have a representative, her name is Katie Gilmarten, and she has offered to do grassroots advocacy training with us. She can do it in person or virtually, but basically just reviewing how bills impact public education and the mechanisms through which we can help support, propose, advocate for, or against proposed legislation. So I think that's really interesting, and I think it's something that the board should think about, because I feel like that would be, I love being involved at a higher level, and yeah, I think it would be great. So something we can consider.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Maybe that's maybe the June projection Communications Committee, because that seems like some, you know, communications, communicating with our legislators, and having them best do that. And the bill you mentioned, is that the one that kind of limits how much they receive based on how much they actually spend on students?
You know, I haven't read it in great detail, honestly, but it's, yeah, it's about fairer payments, which means basically they're not getting the same payment that a brick and mortar school would get, which is, you know, not fair, because they have much less operational costs.
Thanks, Deanne. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we will move on to the ERC report.
Nothing, our next meeting is January 22nd.
All right, thanks, Deanne. All right, now we are at our second public comment period. All right. Again, same instructions, this is first time, you allow maximum of five speakers on any particular topic. Please limit comments to three minutes. Note, it's our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we'll put responses on our website. When approaching the podium, please state your name, municipality of residence, and your agenda topic, or topic which you're speaking on. All right, first we have Ernest Ye.
My name is Ernest Ye, and my family lives in Whitpain. I have a daughter in 11th grade and a son in 8th grade, who are both in the gifted program. My daughter continues to rave about the 9th and 10th ELA Social Studies course, and has been talking it up to my son for next year. So I'd like to present some comments and questions with regards to the recent proposed changes to the gifted program. In general, I trust our school district, the superintendent, the school board, the leadership teams at the schools, and most importantly, the teachers, to make the decisions that will provide the best educational opportunities for all of our students, without necessarily needing to be micromanaged by students or the parents. Case in point, are the current discussions, as controversial as they are, the school start time and end time options. There's been plenty of back and forth discussions between the district and the parents, and there seems to be a fair amount of input from parents and families on both sides of the argument, for and against. Conversely, I feel that the communications with regard to the proposed gifted changes have been severely lacking, and the proposed changes seem to be, have been developed without complete examination and discussion with all stakeholders. Although the most recent communication stated that the 910 ELA Social Studies course will not be eliminated, this reversal seems very reactionary, rather than part of a formal reevaluation process, and was done only in response to the student and parental input in the last two, two to three weeks. Now, there are several points that I would like the board to address. Was this process that was undertaken, that first identified the need to make changes to the current high school gifted education program? What were those identified needs? We have yet to hear from anyone what specifically deficiencies were in the current courses that prompted the, prompted the elimination of the course as part of the reframing of gifted education. If there were no deficiencies, then there was and is no need for elimination of the course. More importantly, there were no new objectives or metrics defined to measure success of the new reframed program. Reframing included a very nebulous plan, and I paraphrase, "We think we can expand gifted program access and meet the needs of gifted students by offering AP and honors courses." That is not gifted education. I would like to know who was ultimate responsible for assessing, assessing, evaluating, and optimizing the gifted program curriculum. Is authority delegated to the five district staff members who were on the Zoom meeting the other night? I would ask, is that, is the program supported by the board? Or was that delegated authority to the, I'm just going to call it the Curriculum Committee, because I don't know who was actually ultimately responsible. Dr. Haney, Dr. Heim McCloskey, Dr. Schmidt, Ms. Latour, and Dr. Dewan were on the Zoom call. I don't know if any board members on Zoom call it all or not. But was that approved by the board? And if not, because it's not necessary, the board delegates authority, does the board now have any questions for the Gifted Curriculum Committee? I think it's very important for us to all know what routine continual assessments are performed with the gifted program, as well as any of the other special education programs that have been discussed tonight. We all want objective data to assess what we are doing well, and what we can do to improve all of our acronym programs within our schools. I'm specifically asking why the elimination of the 910 ELA Social Studies course was one of the key points about how the committee was going to improve access to gifted services to more than just language arts and social studies. I'll try to wrap up quickly, I apologize. I specifically asked what metrics were obtained that justify the elimination of the course as part of the reframing and improving the gifted program. The response during the Zoom was that there were no negative metrics. Why would we want to eliminate an otherwise successful program with no negative metrics as part of improving the overall program, especially if we have not already identified and developed replacements, or taken advantage of the successful course model and adapting to other subject areas?
Am I emailing the rest of your comments? I'm sorry, it's just late, we have a couple more commenters for the evening. I'd be giving everybody a little bit of leeway this evening, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we all understand, you know, that we would like to provide input and how that decision was made.
Sure, if you want to email you the rest of your questions, we'll do that, thank you. Katie, anyone online?
There is no hands on Zoom.
Okay, Elaine Goucher?
Good evening. My name is Elaine Goucher, and I'm from Whitpain Township. And I'm here on the topic of school board vacancy, and if I have time, I would also like to address just a little bit about gifted ed. So I want to say, my family and I, first of all, I want to say thank you for all you do. Your work is so complicated, and I'm really impressed. I'm here to talk about the school board vacancy, and I want to say we moved here when, 2006, and I have twins now that are 25, they graduated from Wissahickin, and I have a 24-year-old. And I started getting involved in the school, and I met Jill Lafferty. And here, I'm just to tell you, she's going to be applying for the vacancy position, and I know a lot of other people have already spoken for her. I just want to let you know, when I moved to the area, she was very kind to me. Sometimes it can be clicky at some schools for some of the moms that get involved in helping out, and I just, she always made me feel very welcome. She, I met her when I was working at the high, at the middle school store. She helped, she did the middle school dances. She was working at, we offer fundraisers. We've been to fundraisers where she just totally transformed the Fort Washington Mercedes-Benz dealership. It was a wonderful dance, Mr. Omahandrove, he was a music. He was a music teacher, but he also has a big band. Um, she has four daughters in the sys- in the school system, and I think they were spaced out, so she had a child in the elementary school, the middle school and the high school, and I think she was on the Home and School Association for all of them, like as the president. She um would do the um, um, the senior breakfast. She also did the ice cream uh socials for when the kids announce what colleges they're going to go to. Uh, my son, Eamon, had the privilege of sitting where those two boys are now, and um he um, he voted for Jill uh for this last um school board election, and um the students all know her, they love her, and what I want to say is, she would be a resource uh to all the board members. She knows so many of the teachers. She knows so many of the people that work in the the uh school, you know, the lunch uh people and the aides and um she would be, um, and she's also um what my, um, but she, she plays well with others. She's not egotistical. She's humble, and I'd like you to consider her. Um, for gifted education, um, my son, Eamon, he was in a gifted education program, and he did, um, what I want to say about gifted ed is they don't do math, and they don't do science. And I was told, and he he really enjoyed the language arts and the one that you have now, but he needed more. They said he could study it in English, he could study science. So you'd read about someone else doing science. Science is doing it. It's working in a lab and doing the science. And I imagine with math, too. It's not about reading it. Um, it's about doing it, and so I really think that the program needs to, if you're gifted, you're not gifted in language arts or social studies. You may be, but you may be just in science. So that's something that has been really lacking um in the school district.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm giving everybody a little bit of leeway, but it's getting a little late. Thank you for understanding. All right, and last speaker, Chastity Bruno. Oh, I'm sorry, Katie, was there anyone online? I'm sorry, I want to go back and forth. Okay, Chastity, is Chastity still here? Okay.
Uh, my name's Chastity Bruno. I'm from Lower Guanend. I'm here to follow up on the October twenty eighth false, misleading, damaging email sent by Superintendent Chris Field. Sure you all know, you've seen it, you've heard it. Um, I think part of why I'm here today, I'm not stopping. I think it is really unfortunate that he has not sent a correction nor apologized to my son. Um, more unfortunate that the nine of you, excluding the new member, have not actually done anything to make him correct that mistake. It was completely utterly false and sent without speaking to one single person. And you are letting an entire community think that an anti-Semitic event happened, and it did not. Shame on all of you.
All right, so that wraps up our second public comment period. We're now at board comments. Uh, any fellow board members that commented this evening? Yeah.
I'll make this very brief, uh brief. I know we all want to go home and sleep. Um, but this has been something I put in my pocket, just because I haven't known when to say it, and um it burns a hole in my pocket every day. I want to express my deepest, deepest appreciation for the cafeteria staff at Whistahicken. They truly are a bright point in my day, every single day, and I look forward to seeing them, and I know they often go underappreciated, but I I can't express to you how grateful I am for their presence and how much of a difference they make in my school day. That's all.
Other comments?
Can we just end on that beautiful note? Because that was really nice.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.